Hour, December 1st, planning a zoning commission meeting. Thank everybody for being here on this rainy day. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the November 6th minutes as well as UR 2514, a C Spire utility review, basically 12,000 square linear feet of buried cable.
And Mr. Chairman, if you would, we did have a request to add an item to the agenda.
Okay, yes.
The resolution, I believe you have a copy in front of you.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and do that under new business at the end of the meeting, I guess.
Sir, that would be an agenda item I.
All right, and that's a resolution for an extension of a moratorium for a certain building, for certain subdivision projects. Correct, Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. It was enacted by the city council just for the planning commissions and put on it.
Right, and we'll bring that up at the end of new business, right?
I'm okay with that. If you want to have the commission make a motion to amend the agenda, to add that item at the end, and vote on that, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, sounds good. So we go ahead and do the consent agenda first, or?
Sure.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that is not a new moratorium. The council passed this.
Correct.
20-day extension.
Extension of the court.
It's the last application.
Yes, correct. All right.
So with that, the consent agenda tonight, we have the two items. We have a approval of the minutes from the November 6, 2025 meeting, and utility review 25.14. I have just a couple slides on that for us to look at. This is a request of C Spire for approximately 12,000 linear foot of buried cable. The address is located at Lakeview Drive. That is the Fairfield, near the Fairfield and in the Fairfield subdivision along Booth Road and Twin County Road 44, or Twin Beach area. The project area is highlighted on the screen. Staff recommends approval of this utility review 25.14 with the following 11 conditions, which are standard conditions, help curated by the inspectors that we have, conditions 1 through 11. If there are any questions, we can remove either one of these items. Otherwise, that is the full consent agenda for item 2 tonight.
Are there any questions on the, on UR 2514? Are there any changes that need to be made to the minutes from our last meeting? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as is. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, we have resolution number 2025-05 in front of you. Can somebody make a, make a motion that we consider this under new business at the end of our meeting, please?
Present the resolution number 25-05 at the end of the.
Do I have a second? Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, moving on, SR 2506, Pelk Tire Auto Center Service.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is a site plan review for the Pelk Tire Auto Service Center at Encounter Development. It's lot 7. There is the science northeast corner of Highway 181 and 104, B2, Element 3 is here, and there the surveyor engineer of record. There's a zoning map and aerial map. You guys are familiar with Encounter. This is the proposed site plan. It's got all the site data. These are the elevations. There are larger ones in the packet, too. So this little bit of history, the Encounter Development was annexed into the city on March 22nd, 2023 via ordinance number 1772, and it came from the zoning case 2301. And then later on, the subdivision case 2413 subdivided the subject property into the current existing lots in July of last year. So most of the things are compliant when we go through our criteria for reviews. You can see, or they're in A, there are two that we'll talk about, the lighting, noncompliant, and the tree and landscaping, noncompliant. Fortunately, it's just some tweaks, though. So there is surplus parking with 21 spaces. There are three pervious spaces that accommodate the 20% overage. There are seven compact parking spaces, which is more than the 30% required. The drainage was accounted for when the Encounter Development came to be in accordance with subdivision case 2413, so there's no retention-detention facilities on the individual lots. The stormwater from this site will be distributed to a pipe network that runs along the east property line that carries runoff to the existing shared detention pond on lot 12. The final plat requires all the sites to do a trip generation report, so the applicant provided a trip generation memo, and that memo concluded that the trip generation rate should not negatively impact the overall traffic flow with Encounter Development. And within the packet, you'll see there's some close-ups of three different turning radii, which we asked about to make sure different vehicles can maneuver in on the site freely and safely. So with the tree and landscaping plan, the city horticulturist states that the proposed palm trees do not count towards the required perimeter trees. There are existing over, overstory, AKA frontage trees, that actually do count towards the required perimeter trees. So he went on to suggest to space the proposed palm trees away from the existing frontage trees for optimum growth and to have the tree protections. The northern part of the subject property that is adjacent to Encounter Drive is lacking the, quote, "solid and broken visual screen" that's required by the tree and landscape ordinance. So there's proposed suite viburnum, which provides the unbroken visual screen along Bushel Drive and Highway 104. There should be some 48-inch plantings at the time of planting, need to be added along Encounter Drive. That also helped with the dumpster enclosure. The subdivision case provided certain road cuts for each lot within Encounter Commercial Development. This is lot 7, and it was allowed, or is allowed, to have up to two turnouts, one from Encounter Drive and one from Bushel, but the applicant has elected to use one proposed entrance exit off and on Bushel Drive. And I'll show you guys, oh, I think we've got some better, yeah, the landscaping stuff. So right here where the green is, there should be some 48-inch plantings. You can see, I don't know where the, here it is, I don't know where it is. Should kind of have more of these things where that green line is to make up for that. And then there are some more trees that need to be added, so they are required to have 29, we should go through the ones that are highlighted in red, the perimeter trees. The plan requires 29. Right now, there's only 24, so need to have some additional trees planted in the perimeter, and that adds to the overall count at the bottom, too. So they can just add some to make up for that. So this is a site plan, so it goes on to city council. So we recommend, for the planning commission, to recommend approval with the following conditions: revise the landscape plans to add perimeter landscaping on the property that is adjacent to Encounter Drive right-of-way, including the screening of the dumpster enclosure in that area, which would be in accordance with the tree and landscape ordinance in our comments, and revision of the tree and landscape plan to illustrate five additional overstory perimeter tree plantings on the subject site, which would also bring it into full compliance with the tree and landscape ordinance. And then finally, revise the photometric plan to have 10-foot lights as the height maximum. They supplied one, and there were some that were still 14 feet, so they've all got to be 10 feet, and that's per our regulations. So.
Commissioner, if I may, I just wanted to have one correction to that, that last slide.
This one?
Item, yeah. Item 2 on the conditions stated five additional plantings. They would actually need to have seven. The calculations on that second plate, on that slide right here, were taking into account the palm trees. As Michelle said, our horticulturist does not consider those to be overstory trees, so if you subtract three additional from what they're proposing, they're going to have to add seven total.
Now, the staff recommendation is still correct, isn't it?
The recommendation is still correct. Item number 2 would just need to be revised to, say, illustrate seven additional overstory perimeter trees instead of five.
Was, was that in red on the, in the staff report?
No, no. It's addition.
It's, what's in red on the screen?
Is different.
Is different from what you're seeing, so it's in red. It was added after the staff report.
Okay.
The number, so I think by reading that into record from Michelle and Peyton, if you.
Seven.
So two recommend.
I just wanted to, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure we didn't get a.
Right, yeah, the red was.
You know, I'd want to make sure that there was no question that if we did, you know, our normal motions are to approve subject staff recommendations, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what the staff recommendations were and which one we were doing, so there would be no question in, in the future of that. All right, commissioners, y'all have any questions for staff at this time?
Well, I have a question. The deficiency seems pretty similar to another one, like that it was, similar to the two acres.
There's a little bit more on the later, the other case we have, and we'll explain that when we get to the other case.
The other one has to be probably redrawn in the water retention. This one just needs more landscaping. Well, a couple lights are high and.
Yeah, there were a handful that were 14 feet, so.
But I asked Hunter about that ahead of time. The other has some, just needs to be.
It is certainly up to the planning commission's discretion to, if you want to see the revised plan when it comes back next month, you have the ability to do that on the site plan, or you can recommend it with the conditions. As far as staff goes, we felt that one, you know, was significantly different than the other two.
Any further?
We have one comment on the required screening hedge where they have viburnum to.
Mm-hmm.
Underneath on the, I guess this is the. On the lower part of the drawing there, they have underplanted some of those trees with some dwarf susanquas, and they are not specified at four-feet height.
Okay.
And so there would be a gap there. Either those viburnums need to wrap those corners, or a type of susanker would need to be recommended that was the four-foot height.
How will we put that in the motion, Paul?
It's a requirement in the regulations.
Yeah, so you can say it's in compliance, yeah.
Okay, got it.
We'll make note, make sure that that gets tweaked.
Right, because we can, yeah, it's had the 48 inches right here.
I can't, I can't spell viburnum. I can say it.
[laughing].
Apologize, Michelle, for not getting that comment to you.
That's great.
Well, Eric, would, when they submit for a zoning plan, if we don't see it again, will somebody check the photometric once they drop?
We're not letting them on the G C Council agenda until they take care of those conditions. That's how, we're the gatekeeper of that, so.
That's kind of the threshold. If, if you ever want to see something, we make a condition, you certainly have the right to bring it back to see it, but if it's, if it's kind of measurable.
It's not getting bumped to him.
Right, we typically want to see that before it even gets to city council, so we don't have those conditions.
Yeah.
All right, no more questions for staff. I will go ahead, this is a public hearing, correct, Hunter?
No.
Not a public hearing, okay. Then we will move along. Commissioners, any concerns, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to talk to the applicant at all?
Certainly.
I mean, if they want to.
Do you have anything you want to add or take away from this?
I'm sorry, Steve Fisher from the tree engineering.
Fair enough.
You know who I am. Did they send y'all updated photometric, and it still shows?
Yeah, it still has some at 14 feet.
Okay, okay. And then we just need to address the hedge row.
And the 48 inches.
The trees, if we eliminate the palm trees, can we just add seven additional newer trees and just, I'll make sure I got the understanding.
Yes, that's, that's correct. The palm trees, according to the horticulturist, would not count as overstory trees, so subtract those three, put seven new overstory trees that are compliant with our tree list, and you'll be good.
Okay, all right.
And then a couple lights need to come down.
Yep, okay, we can definitely do, take care of that.
And when they come down, you might have to add some more, just because it'll be 10 feet.
Okay, he'll, he'll do the photometric calculations once we do that, so. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant? All right.
All right.
It's time to let you off, all right? Thank you for coming up. Just for the people in the audience, this is actually, this will actually go to the city council, so we'll simply provide a recommendation, and it will go to the city council once these corrections have been made to the plans, and then the city council sees fit to approve, and they'll go out there and start the construction at that point. Commissioners? Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Be specific, do we need to total the exact seven trees since your recommendations and our recommendations differ? How do we need to clarify?
Yes, that's correct. The conditions on that final slide would be correct if you change five to seven. Right now, as written, it says they're required to plant five additional trees. They actually need to plant seven additional overstory perimeter trees.
And I will tell you, our secretary over there does a great job of keeping minutes. We've, we've read these conditions in the minute, so if you want to make a recommendation and just say with staff recommendations to clarify the seven trees or landscape will meets the city requirements, you know, that, however you want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the staff recommendation goes on to say, in full compliance with the city fairhope tree and landscape ordinance, so I think that would cover it.
All right, somebody want to make a recommendation?
I move we approve, or recommend the city council approval of SR 25.06 Pelk Tire Auto Service Center, subject to staff recommendations.
We've got that, so we's. So I think we ought to probably memorialize the seven, just so we don't have anything conflicting.
Subject to staff recommendations, one, one through three, with a change to number two, that it should say five additional overstory.
Seven, seven.
Seven overstory trees.
Okay, so we have a recommendation to approve, subject to staff. We have a motion to recommend approval to the city council, subject to the staff recommendation of the three items, with item two being changed to seven additional overstory trees in lieu of five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is SR 2507 Advanced Auto Parts.
All right, good evening. SR 2507 is a site plan review of Advanced Auto Parts at Planters Point. It's approximately 1.09 acres, located at the northwest corner of 181 and 104. The property's zone B2, and Jade Consulting is the surveyor and engineer of record. I believe they're here this evening. As usual, we've got your zoning map on the left, showing you the surrounding zoning districts, and the aerial map on the right, showing you the current site. This site history is going to get kind of familiar to you this evening, but ultimately, the property's been through numerous subdivisions and MOP approvals. Final plat for Planters Point requires site, site plan review for all future development, hence this application. The difference for this case, though, is that it did come before the planning commission back in October, you may remember, and was ultimately requested to be tabled by the applicant due to some unresolved conflicts between the site plan proposed at that time and the site plan for lot 8, Planters Point, directly to the south of the subject site, which had already been approved by the city council back in March for express oil change. On your screen is the site plan. This is the revised site plan since October, and it's showing the lot 9, which is the subject site, Advanced Auto Parts, and lot 8 to the south, express oil change, highlighted in purple. Our elevations show standard brick cladding for all of the structure, and then Article 2 of the zoning ordinance sets forth the criteria for site plan review. Everything is compliant. The only thing that will go into a little bit of detail is our tree and landscaping. But to kind of give you a little bit more context, from last October, the application, when the application came before the planning commission, their original site plan at that time showed a shared access with express oil to the south. The issue being that when express oil got their site plan approved by the city council in March, that plan did not show the shared access. On the right of your screen, you have Advanced Auto's site plan from October, and then beneath that is express oil's approved site plan, highlighting the difference there. The applicant requested to table it to give both parties time to agree on a shared access plan. They have since done that, and they have updated their application to include a shared access now for both lots 8 and 9. It's a 42-foot wide access consisting of a 28-foot drive, two-way driveway, and 14-foot striped area for delivery truck maneuvering. I'll zoom in on a later slide, but you can see that shared access here in the middle of the site. As far as tree and landscaping, the only issues, or the minor corrections that needed, was needed there is the previous submittal. Our horticulturist had a comment stating that there were four right-of-way trees being proposed, proposed to be removed, and the tree and landscape plan at that time did not show any new right-of-way trees going back. He wanted that to be addressed. At this time, the applicant has not provided any sort of revised plan showing that being addressed. However, staff believes that to be a very minor correction that could be made just by adding a couple of trees to the existing plan. As I mentioned, lot access has changed, I believe, this is our zoomed-in view. So the site currently has one direct access north of the main building, and then this shared access just south of Advanced Auto, which is primarily accessing onto express oil and then granting a throughway for Advanced Auto Parts. Article 5 of the subdivision regulations establishes driveway widths by street classification. However, this part of Rockwell Boulevard, though it is public right-of-way, does not fall under any of those classifications neatly. As such, the subregs do not explicitly provide, provide a required driveway width for this particular road. Since the shared access serves two businesses and their traffic, a wider driveway may be appropriate to accommodate vehicular needs. As such, staff is in support of that shared access plan as proposed. I've included their previous landscape plan here mainly for reference. The vast majority of this is not going to change. The new site plan just kind of shifts that original shared access down to the property line, so the vast majority of the tree and landscaping that was proposed in October is going to remain the same, which is compliant, all except for those four right-of-way trees that our horticulturist said needed to be added back. I imagine with the, the new access, they're only going to increase their landscaping and have more room for trees, so that, that should make it very easy for them to comply with that. One important thing to note for express oil change, and we'll get into this with our conditions for this case as well, is that development permits for lot 8 have already been issued. They're actively working on the land service work at this time, so any approval tonight that affects express oil change, that's going to have to be reflected in revised construction documents provided to the city's building department for those active permits. Parking for the proposed site is compliant. They're showing a 27 parking spaces with two of which are constructed with pervious material and compliance. Drainage in Planters Point is a little bit unique. Publix provided their own drainage back when they developed, and all the exterior lots have to provide their own drainage. This site is compliant with all drainage standards. They're proposing to use low-impact development methods in the form of a bioretention swale and pond, which is, is what we want to see. And then as for traffic, the applicant submitted a traffic letter proposed, that proposes that Auto, Advanced Auto Parts will generate a total of 30 AM peak trips and then 44 trips during the PM peak hours. Staff rec does ultimately recommend approval of SR 2507 Advanced Auto's site plan review with the following conditions, and I'm going to read these out verbatim just for the record as they are kind of precise. So number one, provision of a complete tree and landscape plan for Advanced Auto Parts illustrating full compliance with the city of Fairhope Tree and Landscaping Ordinance to be reviewed by the city of Fairhope Horticulturist prior to review of the case SR 2507 by the city council. Number two, provision of a revised site plan and tree and landscape plan for express oil change in association with SR 2406, their site plan review from March, adjusted to accurately depict the final agreed-upon proposal for shared access between lots 8 and 9, Planters Point subdivision, prior to review of this case SR 2507 by the city council. Number three, provision of revised plans and submittal documents for express oil change for all active development permits. And number four, if the applicant elects not to pursue a proposal for shared access between lot 8 and lot 9, Planters Point, the application and all supporting documents for SR 2507, this case, must be revised and resubmitted in accordance with the next available standard submittal deadline, as outlined by the Fairhope Planning Commission meeting and deadline schedule. So that was quite a lot. I am obviously here if you have any questions, and Jade, the applicant is here as well, and if you have any questions for them.
Anybody have any questions for Peyton at this time?
Have the, the proposed, are there any required changes to the express oil been conveyed to their engineer? Or we don't have.
Yes.
The same engineer on the two projects, correct?
Yes, we.
But they're communicating, they both know what's going on, and?
Yes, sir. They are communicating. We have a agreement between both parties, included in your agenda packet, from the, I forget his title, but the engineer for express oil change of southeast. I believe the applicant can probably give you better information about that, but we do have an agreement from both parties that they, they are agreed upon the initial proposal. They'll still have to work out with their lawyers, anything, any easements or anything like that.
Yeah, when the resubmittal comes in the portal system, we're going to need to, I just, so we know who to route it to, who we know needs to look at.
We have that contact available, so.
Got it.
Yep.
Any further questions for the staff at this time? All right, thank you, Peyton. Any applicant have anything to add at this point?
I don't have a lot to add. Paul Marcinco with Jade Consulting, I just wanted to clarify and first say thank you for letting me table this in October, bring it back here. It's given us a lot of time to talk to express oil change, talk to their engineer. That design is ongoing. This works. We went through some drainage revisions on their site, suggestions, if you may. I want to thank them publicly, if they're watching, for their, their time to coordinate with us so that they can reroute their stormwater. Their pond did not change, just the piping, and then our drainage really just remains the same. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Have any questions for the applicant?
I just, the, the. Acceptance letter for the plan approval for the driveway, that doesn't say anything about landscaping.
The letter from express oil change? The, the letter itself is supposed to indicate that we have coordinated with them. The revised landscape plan, that it will be required before we go, before city council, will show the landscaping meeting the requirements of the city. So whether, we, we expect, and my, my client has, has accepted that most of that will be on our site, so that is our expectation. Their, their landscape plan has not changed much, except for a little bit of the plantings in between. We moved those around and get that same number and make sure it's adequate and meets the city requirements.
And I think Peyton's can recommend the condition there of the permit will cover that plan.
All right, no more questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, again, this will be a recommendation from us to the city council. Can you put the staff rec back up, please? And if there are no more questions, I'll accept a motion.
I move we recommend the city council approval of SR 25.07, subject to the four staff recommendations.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Pass this unanimously. All right. Next on my agenda is SR 2509, Seven Brew Fairhope.
All right. Thank you. This is a site plan review for Seven Brew Fairhope at Planters Point. Property is approximately 1.01 acres, located similarly at State Highway 181 and 104. Zone B2, general business district. Surveyor of record is HFAAE Limited. Included the zoning map as well as the aerial map for your reference, and the site plan proposing the drive-through-only coffee restaurant. Elevations for the restaurant as well show brick cladding and standard materials. Subject sites similarly again has been part of numerous subdivisions and MOPs since 2020, and that final subdivision requires site plan review prior to any development on-site. Article Two of the zoning ordinance sets forth criteria for site plan reviews. The majority of these are compliant, however, we do have a number of them that are non-compliant, and a couple others that require more information, which we will dive into in more detail. To start with the quick and easy ones, our exterior lighting for the site is non-compliant. The proposed lighting meets, majority of the zoning ordinance requirements are onsite lighting, however, the photometric site plan does show light levels off of the property above 0.0-foot candles beyond the site boundaries if approved or the plan.
Could I interrupt you for just one second? If this is, if we make a recommendation, Hunter, to the city council, if we make a recommendation to the city council not to approve, this just goes to the city council, correct?
Yes. So this is a site plan to the city council, and you have a few options. You can recommend approval, approval with conditions, recommend denial, or you can send them back to the drawing board if you want to see the revised plans. So we kind of have a black and white, either approve, approve with conditions, but we would not be upset if it comes back, get a chance to revise these, and we can come back with a recommendation of approval if you want to see.
If there's more information needed, I think y'all probably need it to come back. And I was just, what I was getting at is if the applicant was here, would it be in their best interest to, you know, recommend that we hold this over to another meeting rather than, you know, I mean, I don't, can't speak for the other commissioners, but I don't feel comfortable, you know, making an approval when it's got a staff recommendation to deny and there are a number of items that are still needed and a number of items that are non-compliant. So I was just going to see like the last, you know, plan, and we have these from time to time withdrawn, and then they come back after they've, you know, tweaked it and gotten the information that y'all need. And I was just wondering if that applicant wanted to do that at this time, or if they wanted us to go through the whole process and see what happens at the end.
Well, I did have a question on this one, too. Just kind of piggybacking on something Rebecca said earlier, you know, I'm all for us holding developers accountable and holding people to our planings, but I also want to make sure we're consistent. And I know sometimes that's something I hear criticism from developers and builders on that we're a little bit inconsistent. This one feels like it's the, when you look at the staff comments section, it feels very similar to one that we approved with conditions. I guess that's where I'm, I am interested in hearing what makes this one different from that one. Maybe not the whole entire presentation, but at least the items of why is this different than the one that we approved with conditions? Because it seems like they have the same two marks.
It's still a revision of the photometrics and it's landscaping on screen.
So let me, to clarify that, if you'll pull the plan up, there is no screening, there was multiple items here, and one of those is screening of a detention pond. And there's variables there in the tree ordinance. Sometimes that's just a screening, sometimes that's a fence if it's detention. So right now, the design for the, they've designed for a 25-year, and there's only a half a foot of freeboard on that. So, you know, that's a fence. We really don't want fences in the front yard of our commercial properties. We try to, our ordinances provide other alternatives, like a bioretention pond. That would be a sufficient solution, but it would probably be a completely different design than this, maybe. We just felt that was, you know, we don't really want to stick fences. I think there's only a couple we have where you're screening because our tree ordinance says that detention pond is an incompatible use. But bioretention, smaller swales, things like that are two feet smaller, less than two feet deep, you know, those are okay, don't have to be screened. This one is four or five, I think even six feet in some places, designed in a 25-year storm with only a half a foot of freeboard. So that requires a fence, and, you know, where it's located, we didn't, we didn't feel like that was, the drainage port says that it's, they provided the screening, but then you look at other plans and it's not there. So the screening is not there. So maybe it's a misunderstanding of what they need to screen or how they need to screen it. Some of that will come from our horticulturist, has to approve the bioretention pond if we get that alternative design. So right now, as designed, we have to recommend denial of this one. If they got us a revised plan that our horticulturist would get behind, I think we could come back with a approval, whereas the other two.
That one just needed seven trees, you know, two lights lowered and a few shrubs.
Yeah. Those were measurable. This is, I think this could actually come back with a different design that I would, we recommend.
And the drainage issue is kind of the primary concern there. There are a number of trees that tree plantings that this site is deficient of as well.
That part, the tree part could easily just be done and erect, but it's the design part on the drainage that.
It's just happened to be the same two categories. I think this one's more.
Those two are the same, but it's the drainage that's giving them more. And that's something where there's some give and take to it. Is the applicant here? Would you like to work with the staff and come back at, you know?
100%.
Okay.
I'll talk to you guys about that. My apologies. I thought this was pretty much squared away, but I will circle back with my team and come back.
Okay. So you?
Dennis Proto, P-R-O-T-O.
I just want to withdraw this at this time and then bring it back as soon as you.
100% next time, trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And just to clarify, we're going to table that for the next one.
So we'll table, we'll go ahead. Do I need a motion for that?
In.
All right. If I could get a table, a motion to table subject to applicant request?
I'll make a motion to table SR 25.09 at applicant's request.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Sorry to.
Chair, we have a clarification on how long this application is to be tabled before it comes back, or is it?
As soon as they get it together, we'll bring it on back.
Need a number of days?
Is it 30 days?
Believe indefinitely until the applicant has complete application.
They're going to want to get it pretty quickly, so it's.
All right.
All right. All right. Next on my agenda, SR 2510, Culvers.
Yes, sir. All right. This is another site plan review. Culvers of Fairhope in Planters Point, located at Highway 181 and 104. Cadre Engineering is the surveyor and engineer of record. Our zoning map and aerial map as per usual, as well as our site plan and elevations. Subject sites is required to have site plan review per the Planters Point subdivision approved, final plat approval in December 2023. The vast majority of the review criteria for this case is compliant. The three items that require more info are minor and can be easily adjusted prior to city council. The mechanical equipment being the kind of, the first one, essentially their plans just didn't locate it. Typically with restaurants, they go on the roof, and we didn't have a roof plan that illustrated that. They would just need to provide those plans before the case go to city council. Same with dumpster. The dumpster location is compliant on the site plan. They just included detail for that dumpster screening, something that could be adjusted prior to city council review. Drainage for the site is compliant as well. The provided hydrology report states that the subject site is going to utilize underground detention pond system underneath the proposed hardscape surfacing, which will then tie directly into existing drainage system located at the southeast corner and go across 181, discharging downstream. Parking for this site will require a little bit adjustments. The minimum required parking spaces is 37 with a maximum of 44 there, and 11 of those have to be compact car spaces. Their proposed site plan illustrates the total 42 parking spaces, 16 of which are compact spaces. So if approved, they're just going to need to reduce that number of compact spaces from 16 to 14, and then adjust the surfacing for any overage parking requirements, or any parking spaces over that required 37 will have to be pervious surfacing, something they can just add a note on the site plan for. City of Fairhope Tree and Landscape Ordinance requires eight overstory frontage trees for this site and 23 overstory perimeter trees for the site. The site plan only shows seven overstory frontage trees and 10 overstory perimeter trees. We can get into it a little bit more here, but ultimately, this site, this tree and landscape review here illustrates all the frontage trees in green, overstory perimeter trees in orange, and all the yellow trees are understory trees, which in this case does not help them. The tree and landscape ordinance requires you to have X number of overstory frontage trees, X number of overstory perimeter trees, and they are deficient, as you can see by the spreadsheet on the right. However, they're mostly deficient because they've put a lot of understory trees where they would typically put overstory trees. So staff's belief there is that if they revise this plan just to remove those understories and put in some additional overstories, they can bring it into compliance relatively easily without having to adjust any landscaping, drainage, or any of the other items that might otherwise shift the lot around. As such, staff does recommend approval of SR 25.10 Culvers Fairhope Site Plan with the following conditions. Revision of the tree and landscape plan to illustrate full compliance with the tree and landscape ordinance, revision of the plans to include a detail illustrating dumpster screening. Item three is different from your staff report. That's just revision of the site plan to reduce the total number of compact parking spaces to no more than 14 as required by the city zoning ordinance. And number four, revision of the plans to include a detail illustrating the location of all proposed mechanical equipment, all of which would have to be done before going to city council.
Any questions for staff at this time, commissioners? All right. Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to add anything at this time?
David DeShere with Cadre Engineering. Appreciate y'all's time and consideration of the project. We acknowledge all those conditions and are working toward getting all that information provided. The mechanical pads will be on the roof, just like a normal restaurant would. The dumpster screening, we have details of that, so we'll be able to provide that now. It was like what you saw in the elevations, it's going to be similar material to the building in terms of what the material use is or material is. The landscaping, we'll work with our landscape architect, WAS, to correct the tree issues that we have. So we're here to answer any other questions that you may have for us.
I was, well, I was curious if, and I'll say, what I always say is when you do have some required pervious, you know, that is a minimum, and it certainly looks a lot better if you do an entire run, or, you know, we don't, there's not a maximum. So, and with, and underground detention is expensive. So I was curious if you guys had looked at whether increasing the amount of pervious surfaces could reduce your underground detention and, you know, win-win.
So we did, absolutely. You know, other techniques were looked at as well. One of the things that drove us kind of away from doing that was the soils below are very heavy clay and didn't provide any benefit to going to trying to infiltrate.
You'd have to have a constructed base to hold it.
Exactly.
Okay. Which is basically underground detention.
That's right.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Other questions? Applicant?
Can we go back to the recommendation about the parking and the?
This one, Eric?
How much of a redo of your parking plan is that actually going to be? Is that just a matter of restriping, or are you having to move stuff around?
So two of the compacts will just get larger in size, which is not a major. And all the compact, if I remember correctly from memory, they're all on the south side? Is that right? Yep. Sorry, that's the south side of it.
Okay.
Right. So, you know, we have the room along that south side to get the extra width and, you know, the depth needed to go from a compact to a regular size. In fact, that's the side that we have the most landscaping left between the property line and the curb.
So no reconfiguring of your proposed asphalt layout, just restriping of what you've got, essentially?
Correct, except to get a little more distance for.
To get a little more distance. Okay.
Right.
All right. Sir?
Thank you.
Any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move we recommend approval to the city council of SR 25.10 Culvers Fairhope, subject to staff recommendations one through four.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second? And that's one through four, adding three as is seen on the screen in front of us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Moving right along. Next item on the agenda, SR 2508. This is a site plan review for the Fairhope Boarding House, and this is not a public hearing, correct? But then SD 2516 is.
That is correct.
Got it.
So Mike Jeffries, City of Fairhope Planning Department. As we said, this is a site plan review for the Fairhope Boarding House. It's located at the northeast intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Church Street. We've moved away from the 181 corridor into the central business district. This property is zoned B2. The surveyor and engineer of record is SE Civil, and they are with us here this evening. On the screen on the left is our zoning map, and on the right is the aerial. This is the location of the Fairhope Hardware Store, has been recently removed. A little history, the planning commission did approve a six-unit multiple occupancy project, case SD 19.36. That was the renovation of what was the existing two-story building. It was going to have a four-unit, commercial retail units on the bottom floor with one, maybe two offices on the second floor. As I said, that building has since been removed, rendering that approval null and void. On the screen on the left is the site plan. On the right is the proposed first floor. This is a three-story building with a rooftop terrace for the overall building. We have the second and third floor as well, and the proposed rooftop terrace. The first floor, looking back, is the proposed med spa and restaurant, with the second and third floor being the proposed boarding house, and then the rooftop terrace being an accessory to the boarding house. Some of the elevations we have that we can refer back to. The review criteria for the set plan, site plan is as shown. You can see some are compliant, some are non-compliant, and we'll go into more detail So for the building itself, the rooftop terrace, although as defined by the Fairhope zoning ordinance, is not a fourth floor. This space does allow for an additional 155 people with an occupant load of up to 300 people per the layout as it's shown. The principal use, which is the boarding house, has an occupant load of only 60. The rooftop terrace is meant to be an accessory use to the principal use. If approved, the rooftop terrace shall be limited to use by the boarding house tenants only. The rooftop terrace area as shown on the submitted plans covers 1,965 square feet of the allowable 1,983 square feet. Areas reserved for temporary structures shall not be located within 10. Areas reserved for temporary structures shall not be located within ten feet of any lot line. The plans need to be revised to clearly delineate the temporary structure area. There are currently chairs, tables, fire pits, all of which are considered temporary structures that are shown around the rooftop terrace, including on the sides of the rooftop terrace along the right-of-way lines. With that area, and this is, some of that language is straight out of the zoning ordinance for what that rooftop terrace section requires, and we wanted to make, make it clear that some of that needs to be either removed or moved away from the building to be in compliance. The mechanical equipment has not been finalized, as the actual use for the building has not quite been committed to. The applicant is aware that the forty feet is the height limit for all structures, including that mechanical equipment, and the architect shall verify at time of any permitting that the height of all the mechanical equipment is below that forty feet. Parking, the Central Business District requires parking for residential units. One space is being provided for the live onsite manager as required for the boarding house use, and that is accessed from a garage from the arts alley through the loading zone. A required loading zone is provided for, and it is onsite, it's on the north side of the property, as the dimensions are fifty-five by twelve, also required by the zoning ordinance. However, there is a proposed gas meter with protective bollards that are located inside of that loading zone, reducing that width to ten feet, therefore making it non-compliant. Staff is also concerned with delivery access from the provided loading zone to the med spa and restaurant, looking at the layout of the buildings of how merchandise, how items will get from that loading zone through the actual little corridors and into the surfaces, and not be just delivered in from Church Street and/or Fairhope Avenue. Another concern is impact of the surrounding neighborhood. As I just said, staff has concerns with the different services required to provide for the proposed uses and the spaces and the intensity of the accumulative effect for, such as delivery routes, service routes, and all those are unclear on the proposed plans. Staff recommends denial of SR twenty-five point zero eight Fairhope Boarding House site plan due to a conflict with the required loading zone and gas meter, impact on the scale of the project to the surrounding neighborhood, and concerns with the increase in traffic caused by the intensity of the use. This is just a site plan review that is a recommendation to city council. There is, as we mentioned at the beginning of this, a simultaneous application for the multiple occupancy project that goes into review, a little more detail of what some of the drainage details, landscaping, and other items. But I'm happy to answer. Any questions on behalf of staff? And I know the applicant, in S.E. Civil, is with us this evening, and they can answer questions as well.
Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? So we basically, at this point, we have the site plan review, where we make a recommendation to the city council, and then we have the, the public hearing and the multiple occupancy project that comes up next, and that does not go to city council.
Correct.
And then ultimately, whatever's approved comes back to us at what point?
So if... The site plan would be the final approval for...
What city council gets?
Yes, once it gets to city council, that's the final review authority for the site plan, you would be for the MOP. So if you made a recommendation...
This would be our, this is our last look, in other words. You know, my concern on this is there's, you know, one concern that I talked to you about, Hunter, is, you know, I thought of a boarding house that you had a room, there's a bathroom down the hall, you ate at seven o'clock in the morning, the door's locked at eleven, and you had to knock on the door for the person to get out of their room and let you in at that point. And this looks like, you know, end around to avoid parking, which I'm not necessarily for against parking. I love the idea of having people in downtown to shop in the stores and keep them, you know, busy and full, but, but on the other hand, you know, we're looking at a lot of stuff here when you look at an occupancy that could be, you know, four-hundred and some odd people. And, you know, you and I have talked about how many places you've got, you know, I think it was, which architect was it? There's beaties in the details, Paul. Frank Lloyd Wright, I think, said beaties in the details, and, you know, we've talked about water meters and the, you know, sidewalks and Fairhope and, you know, dumps, dumpsters on other people's property, and I'm just concerned with, you know, I heard a few things that they're not sure what they're doing here or there yet, and I just wonder, are we at the point that we can make a sufficient recommendation to city council one way or the other if we don't know, you know, exactly, you know, what they're doing as far as, you know, is this going to trigger more of a dumpster, or will they maybe not have to have a dumpster, or would they have to have, you know, you know, different types of water or sewer, you know, you know, all these different little infrastructure things that most of us take for granted that Eric could write a book about. I mean, we know enough, you think, as far as what we have for those, you know, to make a recommendation at this time.
Correct. And I can tell you, the dumpsters onsite, and they have provided for a lot of stuff onsite, and the MOP, the multiple occupancy project review, that goes in more view of those details where the utilities and things are located, where the site plan review is the building itself, the comments regarding the use, most of all the drawings have, you know, a this use or a this use. It's either going to be this, or it's going to be retail. So there's that, haven't committed where a lot of other site plans, when we get to it, it's, we are, we know what we're looking at, so we can review it for that exactness of it, to where when it's a little obscure, it's reviewing it for what exactly, like a traffic study is based off of the use itself, but then if the use is subject to change be, just because the zoning allows for a different use in the future, if the use changes in the future, then it'd be, that use change can be reviewed against what the site plan review was. So just, a lot of concerns with this whole site itself.
Well, I mean, if it's approved, and then six days to six months to sixteen years, if something else comes in that meets, I mean, I mean, they, you know, the landlord wouldn't come here and ask us, he'd just run it to somebody else, right? I mean, once we approve it, it's there.
Once we approve the site plan, it is there, and then any changes, which could include if a change in use came in that was not anticipated through this, then the building may not be able to be used for that. You could have a building sitting vacant that got sold on the, without the future owner, knowing that there were stipulations involved with this.
And to kind of put that in perspective, we review the bills just like, so if there's a change in use, one unit changed to a residential unit, well, now parking is required, so it's not just an automatic, you just go rent it to somebody else. We would look at any use, and if it was in compliance with this approval ultimately, then yeah, they would get a business license and go to, go to work. If there was something that was out of compliance with this approval or other regulations of the city, obviously, we would not be able to achieve that business license.
Thank you, honor. I think, any more questions for staff at this time?
Where do the sixty occupants park?
A parking space around town.
I had a question about, you know, in, in June, I guess, May or June, we saw MOP for a six-unit boutique hotel, and it was a six-unit MOP. So why isn't this a twenty-eight unit MOP?
Because it, like you just said, it was, that was a hotel where the individual units are with that hotel. The boarding house, everything is supposed to be accompanied and encompassed inside of, inside of it. So the description of the use by definition is where the separate units don't come into play. That's why there's only one...
Couldn't find that in the code.
One unit required for the resident that is staying onsite.
And Rebecca, there is, the boarding house is, I think, been in our city ordinances since nineteen fifty-three?
Never been...
As far as we know, there's never, you know, there may have been an exception, somebody's operated one, but we, we don't have a lot of language. Like Lee said, I mean, the Forrest Gump, you know, mom ran a boarding house, and that, when you look at national definitions, is, is true. We did have some specific definitions in our ordinance of that, but nothing else that guides...
Picture Little Orphan Annie, Carol Burnett.
Yeah, yeah, right, yes.
And I had some questions about the rooftop terrace that, you know, we, we talked about a lot of things when we, when we first discussed rooftop terraces and how they might work. And so is, you know, do we have a requirement, or has it been contemplated if it's a temporary, if it's temporary furniture? And we've all been there for arts and crafts when things went rolling down the street, when booths went rolling down the street, and the idea of tabletops coming off of a rooftop restaurant is terrifying. So is there either a requirement that they be fixed to withstand wind loads or have storage so that they're removed? You have stayed at hotels where there's rooftop terraces and, and the furniture goes in and it comes out.
Correct.
How, how do we, how do we ensure safety?
And we, we wrote the ordinance specifically, and I know you were asking even if it's on top of a second floor. We got really specific in that, that ordinance. So if it's on top of a three-story building, you know, it's, it's outside of the twenty-five percent, you can have temporary structure, but they have to be ten feet away from the edge, they have to be secured to the building. We don't have anything for storage, but we do expect, you know, if you're, if they're going to be temporary and kept onsite, then where are they being stored? Has to be shown on a plan somewhere. So that was with all the fire pits, and, you know, it could be done, or they stored offsite, but also there was a requirement there, they can only be out there for twenty-four hours at a time, if you remember, for any of the temporary structures. So it's not like you just put it out there and leave it forever. Any temporary structures outside of the twenty-five percent can only be there for twenty-four hours.
Allow fire pits in our fire district?
Yes. Depending, you're not allowed open flames, specifically like fuel burning or wood burning, let's say wood burning. But yes, you can have a fire pit, you can have a fire pit, as long as you are ten feet from the outside wall, you are five feet, there are clearances that are required. Same as a residence can have a fire pit if their house is in the fire district, but there are fire protection and material separations that you've got to have from where those fire pits are allowed to be mounted.
Okay, and you're saying can't be wood, it has to be gas?
It'd have to be gas, yeah.
So that would be a permanent structure. I guess you could have a propane tank.
I, I think that's, I mean, that's kind of the way every plan is shown, all the fart pits and all that, so it's not really...
I guess the people want that, I just, stuff we haven't worked through.
Probably have a quick release or something.
Well, they make portable, I mean, my son has one at his balcony, which I got on to him about, by the way, but he had it out and he took a picture of it, and it's a portable pit that you can bring out, same as another, and it's a disconnect from a, from a propane tank. So they do make things that would be legal within the fire district to do that. Yeah.
Now, the challenge with on top of a third-story building, all structures are limited to the twenty-five percent, so where are you storing that in this plan would be a logical question. You can't just add another structure on top to store it, so is it stored offsite and brought in? Is it stored on one of the first three floors? That's kind of the, some of the questions.
More questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you very much. Somebody like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Hey, how are you?
Ryan Baker from All Cones for now. Larry Smith and Brad Hicks probably also going to speak in a minute as well. I want to thank everybody for listening and taking time tonight. I want to thank the staff for reviewing this. We've been working on this with the staff for about four months now, back and forth many times, and we're, you know, trying to, to get something that is compliant and meeting all the, the parts and pieces. Some of these things are actually new, we've, even though we've had three months of back and forth, some of these comments are new tonight to us, or new as of this week to us, that, so we try to address some of this stuff today. We sent some drawings to the staff earlier today about the gas meter, moving the gas meter, there's plenty of space for us to move it further down. We got that kind of worked out already, but, so that fifty-five foot by twelve foot is clear, we have the ability to do that. But I guess let me just kind of run through the pieces one at a time, and some of your comments that y'all have made. So we, we did submit the application with the two first-floor spaces as tenant, future tenant spaces, not a restaurant in a med spa, I mean, the people want to be able to rent it out to future tenants. The, if they don't have a restaurant, they would put a retail space in there, and if they don't have a med spa, they're, or whatever it is, you know, a professional office space, it might be retail. We did all of our calculations based off of the highest use, to kind of answer your question, Lee. I mean, everything was based off of the maximum occupant load, not, and it's not based off of the number of people that we think will be there. It's building code and trip generations based off of maximum use. So if we're, wind up with a professional office there, it's going to be less use. If ended up, you know, less people likewise. Just kind of want to make sure I'm clear about that with y'all. We understand the med spa, or if there's any medical clinic that gets leased to, that person's going to have to do a build-out, they're going to have to get a building permit, they're going to have to get whatever kind of required permitting and board of adjustment approval, whatever it is that's required of those individual spaces, we understand all of that. The rooftop terrace one, I have a revised drawing that I can give to y'all in a second. The temporary structures part, I'm, I'm a little confused about the furniture being called temporary structures, to be quite honest to you. The ordinance says, the ordinance says temporary structures such as tents, awnings, and umbrellas, they're all things that are covering and have wind uplift and require attachment to the ground. Completely understand that. We're not going to have tents, awnings, or umbrellas. If y'all decide that furniture is temporary structure, that's kind of new to me, but that, that, we understand that. I'm like, I can hand out a revised plan showing it ten feet away from the edge, if you want. I don't know if it's the right thing to do with this, but there's ten copies you can hand out to everybody over there if you want to. And likewise, I want to, here's another drawing, hand those out, first, first floor as well. We have one for y'all, too. So, you know, storing the stuff, it's movable furniture, you can move it inside, move the tables and chairs that are inside, and stack them on the inside. I mean, there's, there's space to be moved around, and it's movable furniture, it's not... If the fire pits are an issue, they're, they are furniture-based, I mean, we could turn those into tables, but basically they're tables with propane tanks like Eric, just like you described. It's like what you saw, the bone and barrel, and lots of other restaurants and stuff around town, they have temporary fire pits that sit outside. The, like I said, we've already addressed the gas meter location, so we have the space for that. The delivery, that revised first-floor plan, I've got some arrows shown on there, the idea is that we'll come out of that delivery zone, we'll come in through that hallway that's in the middle, the service corridor that leads to all the spaces inside the building, and to a service elevator that goes up to the rooftop as well. So we're providing our own loading zone space, we shouldn't be impacting anybody else's space around there. That was a lot of conversation during the back and forth of DRC meetings, we understand that. There's other loading zones there, but we're not going to utilize any of them anymore, and everything is going to come in through that loading zone, through the back door, there's roll-up doors as well, there's a dumpster there, there's a lot of space for the stuff to get inside and through a service corridor to get into the building. So I'm not really sure how this has a negative impact on the surrounding community. It's mostly bars, restaurants that are surrounding this building. Across the street, there's a restaurant and an event space that has a pretty intensive use, also directly across the street from us, it's all kind of similar use, CBD use, you know, all combined in one space. So those are kind of some of the thoughts on all that. I kind of want to hand off to Larry, so he can talk about the traffic study, because that's way over my head, but I really appreciate your time, and thanks, if you have other questions, I'll be right here.
I just have a, this rooftop.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you've got seating here for, count it all, but close to a hundred, over a hundred people, and rooftop is only supposed to be, you know, an extension for what's there.
Yes, sir.
It looks like you're planning on using this as a payment or bar for people other than what's already, what's in the building.
Oh, well, I, I guess I'm, there's a couple of parts of that that I want to add, too, I guess, for thoughts on, I mean, the idea of limiting use completely to other people is really hard to understand how anybody's going to enforce that in the future, just, but if people that are there invite friends, if they're going to have a party, they rent out the boarding house rooms, and they rent out, they use the space upstairs, there'd be space for that, it's for their use and enjoyment of the people of the boarding house and the guests, and their guests that might come to it as well. So we just have space available, there's going, their meals are going to be provided upstairs at that space, that's the intent. Back to, you're talking about, Lee, there are going to be rooms that are board, the boarding rooms, and they're providing... and they're providing meals and there's a full-time tenant. Those are the definitions that we're meeting the boarding house per the definitions of the zoning ordinance. And that's what they're going to be doing there. So that's kind of the basis of it. And we're just showing how things could be laid out. We don't, I mean, you know, this is, and the kind of, one of your questions or points, Lee, I mean, the mechanically, I mean, we would have to have 100% finished drawings of everything to figure out where we're putting mechanically. So we're going to have to probably manipulate that area upstairs to make sure we can fit the mechanical units exactly, so they're not over the 40-foot. We might have to move those two bathrooms forward by a couple of feet. We don't know that, but us being 100% with CDs while we're still trying to get a site plan review is, I mean, we've revised, we've actually literally revised the design three different times during the DRC process in order to make compliance with stuff that we're super happy to do. We just want to, you know, our goal was to have a building that was all allowed by right. All the uses are allowed by right in the CBD. Do everything that is meeting the zoning ordinance, meeting the uses, you know, meeting the zoning ordinance and the code. And so we're just trying to comply with all those parts and pieces.
Yeah, no, I like a whole lot about this. And I've just, you know, this is the first time I've seen it though, so it's...
Yes, sir.
You know, when you see those numbers of 400, it's like, you know, wow, you know? I mean, it's just a lot to take in at once. The, but, so those are my, I mean, the rooms, are they for like med spa people? Are they, I mean, I know originally it can change. Are these considered to be, you know, for tourists to come in and stay in? Or people who are going to have something done at the med spa or?
We don't even know if there's a med spa there. That's, one of the owners of the building has a med spa downtown and there was a discussion early on that they might move their location over there. And it's not, necessarily that's going to know what's happening. So, you know, that was the original plan that came there and then we took that off of the plan.
At least it should just be short-term rentals.
What's that?
The units on the second floor.
Yes, that's what boarding house, they're not meant to be long-term. I mean, I guess it could be just like a person could stay at a hotel for the rest of their life if they want to, but... What's that, LOE's, they say at the Plaza, right? So, I mean, whatever, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The drawing you just gave is the first time I've seen a rendering, or the first one I've seen that shows tables and chairs on the south half of that roof. Because that was brought up during DRC and we discussed that.
We also showed it 10 feet, within 10 feet of the roof for three, four months. And this is the first time anybody's brought up that we had to be 10 feet away with tables and chairs.
Sure, no, I understand. I just, because from the, from what's in the original packet, you know, that was, we brought up, what is that area going to be used for? And, you know, we really, it wasn't really described how it was going to be used one way or another. The question I have is, you know, the original drawing showed two exit stairwells, both on the east side. Have we run the travel distances and the required egress width and everything we need? That adding, pretty much doubling the amount of seating on top of that roof from a building code standpoint, doubling the amount of seating on the top of that roof's not going to require a remote? Because then you get into, if you have to add another stair, I know that the zoning ordinance or the, there's requirements about how far away from the edge, any kind of structure like that has to be, and it could really have an effect on the overall design if you end up doing that.
There's a back loop on the backside that goes to the stairs. And there's a stair down on the outside, on both sides, on both the east and the west side. So you can run or go from this either way back into the stair walls. So yes, I have looked at that.
So, okay, one of the other things, just in looking at it, you know, because we're talking architectural details or architectural questions more so, not necessarily building code, but just kind of functional.
Right.
You know, on the two floors of the boarding house. You know, we talked about the deliveries, which was why I think the discussion about the loading zone was so important, because this building, you know, if you, the occupant load, you know, I'd asked you for an occupant load and I know you'd ask why. You know, before we even, I don't think it even incorporated the south half of the roof, but it was going to be around 355 is what was calculated as the occupant load for this building. I don't know if you incorporated full use of the entire roof or not in that. So we're going to have a lot of people in this building. We're going to have a lot of deliveries between linens, between food for the rooftop bar, food for the ground floor restaurant, all of this. The thing that I'm not seeing anywhere on that second and third floor is ancillary storage. There's no linen places, there's nowhere to keep a cleaning cart, there's nowhere for the people that are going to be cleaning the rooms, handling those things to be able to store. Is that going to be brought in? Which would then, I mean, how, how are you planning on handling that? Because, you know, any hotel, boarding house, however you want to use it, you've got places for your cleaning staff carts. You've got places to store your pillows and your linens and all the stuff that you need to make that type of use function. And I mean, I'm not seeing any of that on either the second or third floor.
Sure. Well, and I appreciate that. We have storage space on the first floor and there's a wash dryer on the first floor that was going to be directed towards those things. We've had lots of conversations about it, but because we can't like, every time we take a step forward, we take two steps back, I feel like, on this project. You know, we are trying to move forward and figure out what's going to end up happening. Those are all interior questions of the building that we can address. We need to figure out what services we will be using, how we'll get those services used. But, I mean, why would we start calling services about how we're going to handle things until we even know? For, I mean, we've been spending months to get to this point.
No, and I fully understand that. And just, I'll also say, I am in no way opposed to the concept of what you're talking about.
I think they're good questions, Eric.
Yeah, I'm not at all opposed to that. It's just, you know, and I ran an aerial and kind of did a quick takeoff in the previous building as a mercantile occupancy. And I even counted a quarter of that existing just based on an aerial and a measurement, you know, for storage. And it came out to a max of like 95 occupants in the former building on a single, essentially a single floor with storage was what it, is what I think I got based on an aerial.
On the mercantile use?
Yeah, just, it was 7150 square foot total floor area.
Right.
And then I attributed some of that to being, you know, storage area, which it calculates at a different load than a mercantile does. So I just, at that corner, with everything we've got going on, I just, since it's a site plan review, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, you know, reviewing a site plan, this is what you're locked into when you come time to build. It's not one of those things where you get an approval and then decide to redesign or change a bunch of things, because if you do that, am I not mistaken? You got to come all the way back through this process again?
And that's always the gray area of what is in substantial compliance of, you know, I know we've had many conversations with this. I can tell you, previous site plans, we did get, I mean, we even got street-level views for rooftop equipment. You know, what is the specific use? The MOP is a little bit more generic because it's creating the units. Yeah, I mean, we're certainly not comfortable, or at least have been criticized. I'll say that nicely, when we recommend approval of something administratively that was not the vision that frankly, either you, Board of Adjustment, any public review body, the City Council has approved. So we would like to know the questions, I think.
So maybe I'm not understanding, you started talking about occupant load and everything. Are you saying that because there was a hardware store there that only had a certain occupant load, that's the maximum?
No, 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 no. What I'm just, it's a comparison of what was there, what kind of traffic did it generate? How many people were going in and out on what is probably our second most heavy pedestrian area in downtown? And, you know, as far as parking, where people are going to come and go? How much traffic have we, or how much foot traffic and vehicular traffic do we have? And I just read that, my biggest thing is trying to think it through, all the way through, because we're talking about going from roughly fewer than 100 to greater than 350-ish. So it's a three and a half times. And that's, I just, not saying that that may not be appropriate, but just saying that that's the kind of thing you need to really make sure on a site plan review that you've got, in my opinion, nailed down and ironed out before, I would think, before we would send it for a recommendation or take a stance on it one way or another.
What can, what are you looking for? Because I'm not fonging you when you say that. We have ironed out the uses of the building, the max occupant load of the building based off of that. So what are you asking, what we need to map out further for you?
Would be, one of the things, just the thing that I mentioned looking at it, was the lack of, I guess I'll just use ancillary spaces for the uses in the building. You did clear up one big question I had, because the original drawing I had showed no access from the loading zone to the back of the ground floor restaurant or the med spa. And that was a big note on my questions, and you did clear that up.
Thank you.
But having room, the traffic up and down through the elevator, through the restaurant, through the, because you're going to have to almost come through in a lot of ways, the waiting area for, you know, the check-in area for the boarding house, then up to the second floor, third floor, and then to the rooftop. Just storage and where you're going to be able to stage everything you need for the operation of this building on each of the floors, including the roof. Those are the kind of things, is making sure that your design, you know, takes that into account. Is it a matter of, you know, fewer rooms that gives you space to store something?
Right.
Things of that nature. So those are the kind of things I think that I'm looking at from just a practical operation standpoint of how the building's going to operate.
Sure.
So that's where my question is, is have, have you, in your opinion, taken enough look at what you need to, on each floor, to actually make this building function properly and flow in terms of goods and services going back and forth and materials going back and forth?
And I guess I'm going to answer the question the best I can. We have looked at it, we have not finalized it, because we haven't talked to different vendors about how they're going to handle certain things, because we haven't gotten to that point. I understand your question, they are all operational on the interior of the building. That, when I've been involved with other site plans, I've never seen you all review the floor plans and ask the questions of floor plans of other site plans reviewed as you have on this one. And so it's kind of like, I've done other buildings downtown that none of these questions have come up to this point level either. They're usually operational items that need to get worked out in the internal design of the building. And the internal design of the building is not part of the site plan review. It's really the external, the flow, all these other things, as every other project I've ever worked on. But, I mean, we're trying to answer all of these things. I can, you know, we might make adjustments to answer some of the stuff, but I think we have looked at all the rooftop side of things, where we would store things on the inside of that, how we'd handle that. We've looked at the delivery pieces, the flow of all the services, those other questions that you're asking. And a lot of the questions y'all, staff has brought up, have been great questions. We've made modifications of the building in order to ensure that we've met all those. I'm sorry if I walked away from my, and they're good. Like I said, we want to meet the zoning ordinance, the building code. We're trying to do all those things so we can have, you know, a building that is compliant with all those parts and pieces. And it's all by use and by right of what is already allowed in the ordinance downtown. It's a central business district, there's a lot of use, there's plenty of other buildings that have large intensive uses downtown that have more people than this building does. They're directly across the street, the building across the street has, if you look at the same occupant load, it's probably pretty close when you have an event space and a restaurant and, you know, multiple retail spaces.
They're not three floors with a rooftop bar. And I'll also say, this, I've been around the city for 25 years.
But the difference of the other two floors of our building are very low occupants compared to...
Yeah, I mean, regardless of the...
But the parking is not required by this, so adding a parking requirement beyond the zoning ordinance is not what we're talking about today. Sure. If, I guess my, when I'm here, and let me correct my form wrong, is the, you say the parking is unique to this project? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, I think I would go out on a limb and I want to, you know, I've been wrong before plenty of times, so maybe I'm wrong now. But I think that, you know, we're asking these questions for two reasons. One, you know, yes, we've approved plenty of things in Fair Hope. And there have been times that I wish going back, that we could go back on, where we've got 23 water meters in the middle of a sidewalk and we've got, you know, tree couldn't be built on Magnolia Avenue because we've got a big green, you know, electrical service box where an oak tree, a live oak tree was supposed to be. You know, we can point to numerous areas where we thought we could do this, where drainage had to come out, where a gate was going to be, and this had to be moved and that had to be moved on items. And I would say if this isn't the most intense that we've seen in the central business district, it's in the top three. And it's, you know, and if the one you say is just intense, that this is across the street and you're going across the street from it, then that, you know, kind of, you know, makes us need to look at the issue more of, you know, what kind of impact if we have a, you know, Monte Groll with big parties at both at the same time? Or how is that going to affect? I mean, they're just, you know, questions that we're asking. And I don't, haven't heard anybody say parking's required. Obviously, you know, it's not in the boarding house. But there are concerns that Eric has of, you know, on the roof, if, you know, where are you going to store stuff? If you can't come back and add another building on top of the roof to put stuff in, then, you know, are you going to come back again or where are we? And I think those are fair questions to ask.
Well, I think the traffic stuff, like I said before, is way over my head. That's Larry's stuff, so I'll hand it off to him so he can answer some of those and then I, you know, can answer other questions.
Good evening, Larry Smith, SC Civil. I was actually planning on reserving most of the traffic conversation to the next item, because that's where the majority of the comments came from. However, it keeps getting brought up. So just wanted to point out a few items, as Ryan was saying. Typically, whenever we do these site plan and MOP things within the central business district, you'll see tenant space. And then that's really all the definition you have, and all that gets worked out after the fact. What we look at from a traffic standpoint, when we're running these traffic analysis, is what is the most intense use? So, and the central business district of the uses that we have, that most intense use is actually a retail clothing store. And so what we have done is we have the restaurant space and the retail clothing store and the space of the med spa, if that was what was to come, because that actually has a more intense use than the med spa would. With all that information provided, we have about 46 peak hour trips. Just out of curiosity, whenever I saw this, these comments coming out, I ran, went ahead and decided to run to see what the hardware store was. Whenever we plug in the square footage of the hardware store, their peak hour trips were 36. So we're comparing 36 peak hour trips to 46 peak hour trips. It's only a net increase of 10 peak hour trips that we're talking about.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
What were the timeframes of your peak hours that you calculated?
These are based on the PM peak hour trips, which is basically the way that the IT trip generation works is it runs you an AM and a PM peak hour trip. And so these are on the PM, which was the higher intensity of the...
Because the biggest question is downtown's kind of a different animal. I have a lot of appointments downtown.
Yep.
I refuse to do an appointment after nine o'clock, because that's when trip, that's when traffic picks up and you can't find a parking space. So early morning is not really apples to apples, as it is more, I think, the peak time, the heaviest traffic time, probably in the downtown area, is going to be between 11:00 and 1:00, maybe 11:00 and 2:00, because that's when your lunch crowd, all your shops are open, that's when everybody's coming and going and doing all that stuff. So I was just curious at what point of the day, at what point of the day was that, was that done?
Yeah, these are based on your afternoon.
Afternoon peak hours?
Yeah. And so, basically, where I was going with all this was that we've looked at the most intense use for these different occupants. And you don't meet the threshold, which you'll see in the next one where they are talking about... see in the next one where they are talking about a traffic impact study. We don't meet that threshold even putting the most intense use in here. And as I was playing around with all these numbers, also decided to see what would happen if the second and third floor was not a med spa, and we put office space up in those two floors. And when you do that, it actually increases your trips by two versus the, no, I'm sorry, versus the boarding house. So if you took away the boarding house, put office space in there, you'd actually have a higher peak trip count by two trips. So, and I'm here if you all have any other questions on the traffic side. As Ryan said, on the gas meter, we did provide a drawing today showing that gas meter moving out of that loading zone.
Any questions for Larry while he's here? All right, thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Anything else you want to add, Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brad Hicks. I'm with the law firm Stone Crosby, and I represent the applicants. A big issue to me here is, is everything that they are proposing to do is by right under the existing zoning ordinance. They're, they are not seeking to do anything that requires parking. They're not seeking to do anything that has a higher intensity than what was already contemplated by the zoning ordinance that the city adopted. Okay? So the approval standards that they set forth in the subdivision regulations say that the planning commission is tasked with determining if this project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and it is certainly consistent with both of them. The property is zoned B2, general business district. B2 is defined as intended to provide opportunity for activities causing noise and heavy traffic, not considered compatible in the more restrictive business district. The zoning ordinance literally calls for businesses that are causing noise and heavy traffic in B2. The zoning ordinance defines the CBD overlay district as follows. This district is intended to preserve downtown Fair Hope as the regional village center and the focal point of the city. In accordance with the comprehensive plan, the district encourages infill development, including shopping, restaurant and entertainment, cultural and artistic institutions, offices, government functions, and residential uses. Encourages those things. This project is absolutely consistent with the way it is zoned. This project makes the CBD the focal point of the city, which is what the zoning ordinance asks us to do. This district encourages infill development, which I had to look that up. You, you may have known what that means, but it essentially means, from my internet research, use of land in a built-up urban area for further construction. That's what's happening here. When you look at Article 5B of the zoning ordinance, which governs the CBD overlay district, it specifically states that the CBD is intended to encourage development that generates high levels of pedestrian and bicycle traffic and provides a mix of uses. You cannot get to the CBD without driving there. There is no public transportation, there's no monorail that brings you into the city and drops you off. A car must bring a human there to create pedestrian traffic. So what else besides a boarding house, or a hotel, if you want to build that, or residential things, would bring people to the CBD to create pedestrian traffic, to walk down the street, to shop at restaurants and stores? Everybody else is like me. They're driving in from Daphne just to run their little errand. Okay? What, what we're proposing here fulfills exactly what the zoning ordinance is asking us to fulfill. And it certainly provides a mix of uses, which again, the CBD overlay district wants a mix of uses. So that's what we've done. This project isn't just consistent with the zoning ordinance, it accomplishes what the CBD overlay district is encouraging. Again, the intent of the CBD is to generate high levels of pedestrian traffic. How else can you do that besides having people stay here long enough to walk around? Going back to the other approval standards in Article 5 of the subdivision regulations, and the staff doesn't allege this, but I just, you know, these are the, these are what you guys have to consider when you're reviewing this project. The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and, and with the zoning ordinance, as I've just described, and it does not affect the master street plan, it doesn't affect the park plan, it doesn't affect a bicycle plan, a pedestrian plan, or a capital improvement program. Those are all items listed in the subdivision regulations. This doesn't affect any of those. This project is consistent with the subdivision regulations. None of the reasons for denial are a technical violation of the subdivision regulations. The staff has not alleged that. This project is not inconsistent with any state or federal laws or regulations. Again, the recommendation of denial does not say that it is. Article 5B2E of the subdivision regulation allows the planning commission to deny a project even if the project satisfies the technical objective provisions of the subdivision regulations if you demonstrate, if you demonstrate an articulable rational basis for a determination that the proposed subdivision otherwise endangers health, safety, and welfare of persons of property. You have to articulate a rational reason. There is no reason in this case. The staff's recommendation of denial is based on three things. Number one, a conflict with the required loading zone and gas meter. That has been resolved. Item two, impact on the scale of the project to the surrounding neighborhood. I think that's a typo. I think it was impact of the scale of the project on the surrounding neighborhood. Number three, concerns with the increase in traffic caused by the intensity of use. Okay, so let's go through items two and three since we've already resolved item one. I don't know what it means to say the impact of the scale on the project to the surrounding neighborhood. This project falls squarely within the by right uses for B2 and CBD. It falls squarely within the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. We are building the exact size building that the zoning ordinance tells us that we can. In other words, the project builds a building that complies 100% with the size restrictions and the use requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance is how a city, and I represent a bunch of them, is how a city plans for impact. When you pass a zoning ordinance, you're deciding what sort of impact you want in that space of the city. They've already done that by zoning it B2 and by putting on the CBD overlay district. We've complied with those two things. So how can our impact be, endanger the health, safety, and welfare of persons or property when it's exactly what the zoning ordinance asks of us?
Nothing asks that. I think if you bring up a boarding house that was not even noticed from 1954 in the form of an actual hotel to get out of 10 parking spaces, so I wouldn't say, and I don't like the project, don't get me wrong, I might say I don't like it, but I think it's a little super silly to say that it's exactly what our zoning ordinance asked for when you're using a loophole to avoid 10 parking spaces.
It's not a loophole. It's, 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 it's in the zoning ordinance. Which is, which is all permitted expressly by the terms of the zoning ordinance.
Call it what it is, don't, don't preach to us that it's exactly what we're asking for. I never asked for it. It's something that when you have 300 pages, sometimes stuff slips through and has been sent through.
Okay, but that's fine, but that's not an articulable rational basis for denial because it's in the zoning ordinance.
I understand.
I mean, essentially, what, what everybody's saying is you don't like your own zoning ordinance, but that's not an articulable rational reason for denying something that complies with the terms of the zoning ordinance. Finally, the, the third reason that they give for denial, concerns, concerns with the increase in traffic caused by the intensity of the use. You heard him speak about the, the traffic rates and the peak rates and whatnot, but again, intensity of use is established by the zoning ordinance. The city elected to zone the property B2 and to adopt the CBD overlay district. In doing so, they set the rules for intensity. I don't mean to preach, and I apologize if I come off that way, but the city set the rules, and we complied with those rules. We've complied with the, the intensity that the city contemplated when they adopted these zoning ordinance. That's why you adopt zoning ordinances. The size and use of this project is squarely within what the city has given us to go by. So again, I don't mean to sound preachy, but talking about intensity in these items, when the intensity has already been contemplated by the way that it was zoned, is not an articulable rational basis for denial. So, you know, we're going to request, of course, approval. If you want to condition that approval on the 10 feet of the, you know, the roof plan or, or having a chance to look at this movement of the water meter, that's fine, but we don't see, we do not see an articulable rational basis for denial here, and so we would, we would ask you to approve.
Thank you very much.
And to be clear, he confused a lot of the next case information with this case information. So I just want to be clear that a lot of the stuff he said was related to the multiple occupancy project, not the site plan review. So I don't just, did not get those two blended as much as possible.
Yeah, do, do we have any questions for him while he's up here before?
All right. We, we have several folks here to talk. I know that the hearing will be with the next item.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you wanted to switch around the votes, you could hear from the public before you vote on this. We would have no objection to that. Obviously, it's your meeting, and you can do as you wish.
All right, thanks, sir.
I would just add, Mr. Chairman, in addition to the zoning ordinance setting this in the CBD and the B2, this is obviously, as Mr. Jeffries pointed out, within the standard of the site plan review. Obviously, the MOP is related to that, but I, I did want to include some of the provisions from the site plan review that I think are also applicable to some of the points that were just raised. The application shall be submitted with drawings showing the location of the site and all existing and proposed buildings with sufficient information to evaluate impacts on adjacent properties. Further in the criteria of the site plan review, it references the compliance with the standards, goals, and intent of the ordinance in the zoning district, the laws and the regulations, as was previously stated. It also specifically says in subsection six, impacts on adjacent property, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impacts, and property values. In subsection seven, it specifically says impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impacts, and property values. In subsection eight, it says overall benefit to the community. Subsection nine, it says compliance with sound planning principles. And there's 23, excuse me, 25 other criteria under the site plan review that the planning commission can take into consideration in making its recommendations to city council. I'm certainly not here suggesting certain details or certain facts, one way or the other, but wanted to make sure the planning commission had a full understanding of the criteria that are applicable specifically as to the site plan review under the zoning ordinance, in addition to the fact that it is zoned B2 and it is in the CBD.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Listeners, any questions? You've got the applicant here, you've got the staff members here. Got a recommendation, recommendations now, one of the items for denial has since been cleaned up, of course. And this is a recommendation to city council that we'll be making in this particular case.
Mr. Chair, I don't know, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of overlap with the MOP on this case. I don't know, as counsel just stated, he would have no objection to opening up the public hearing and covering both the MOP. I would ask for separate votes, but I don't see any harm in if, if, if you felt the desire to hear from the public before making any decision on either of the cases.
Sure.
I certainly think that would be appropriate if that is your discretion and your decision as well.
If that makes sense. Commissions have any problem with that? Okay. Will anybody have a problem with us taking about a five-minute break to stretch back sciatic nerves if anybody has that issue? And let's take about an eight-minute break, come back at 6:55, if you will, and then we'll finish the meeting out. I'm going to go. 6:55, we'll go ahead, and we will have the MOP presentation for the Fair Hope Boarding House. And that does include our public participation time. It is in fact a public hearing. So, Mike, go ahead, sir.
So this is case SD 25.16, the MOP for the Fair Hope Boarding House. It is a five-unit multiple occupancy project. Again, we know where the project is located and are very familiar with what the property is owned. Again, there are five units. The individual units is a restaurant located on the first floor, med spa office located on the first floor, the boarding house and their guestrooms are on the second and third floor. The fourth unit is the boarding house permanent residence, whose residence is located on the third floor. And then the fifth unit is a rooftop bar for the boarding house located on the rooftop terrace. And we have the site plan on the left, the proposed floor plans for illustrations if needed. The utility plan is on screen, and I have a blow-up inset of that. The utilities are located on the north end of the property. The north end butts up to the arts alley. You'll notice there are some, we got water meters, gas meter, we have a grease trap. All of these will be installed with traffic-rated lids. They're located on the property inside of, inside of an easement that is there, and this is the loading zone area. Electrical transformer pad is located on the northeast corner of the property. You can see it called out as a 10-foot by 8-foot pad. The elevation views, again, in the purpose of this request is for five units in one building, the site plan review 2508 that we went over. The current proposed uses are the 26-room boarding house with the live onsite manager, the med spa, restaurant, rooftop terrace. The med spa is a use on appeal, approved by the board of adjustment, with the rooftop terrace being an accessory to the boarding house as, as discussed. Utilities are provided by Fair Hope for Electric Water, Sewer, and Gas. AT&amp;T is the communications. All the electric service will require some upgrades that will be at the owner's expense with an aid to construction cost to be determined upon final drawings. The 10-by-8 pad has been shown with protective bollards, water and sewer connections subject to all applicable tap fees and system development charges and any infrastructure improvements or responsibility of the developer. As I mentioned, the meter boxes are traffic-rated with a grease trap, traffic-rated lid as provided in the loading zone. Traffic was discussed a little bit in the previous case. There was a letter submitted with calculations in August of 2025. Since that time, the building has been changed, the plans redid, redone. If the calculations, as Larry Smith indicated, are not going to adversely affect that, then they, no traffic study itself would be required based off what those regulations are. Mr. Cortinas pointed out the fact of maybe that the peak hour trip hours were not conducive to what the downtown hours are, so that may be something to consider as well, except planning commission may require the analysis be conducted for alternate peak hour periods. For the drainage for the project, the stormwater runoff is designed and collected in roof trades connected directly into the underground stormwater system that exists. Staff's recommendation is denial of SD 25.16 Fair Hope Boarding House due to the non-compliant issues outlined in the report. Now, again, this was a quick summary of what the MOP was. I'm happy to go into any more detail on any items or any questions that you have. This is a public hearing for this case. We're available for questions on behalf of staff, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, sir. Does the applicant have anything to add, or would you rather wait till after the public hearing and then?
After the public hearing.
Okay. We'll be fine. All right. Well, good deal. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you don't mind, try to keep your comments to about three minutes or less. And please state your name. You do have to state your name and your address when you come up for our records. And if somebody said what you've already said, you know, we don't need to hear it twice. But now's your chance. So, the, the microphone is open. If anybody would like to ask any questions or make comments of how, how you feel one way or the other, please, that's the chance.
Hi. Hi. I'm Mary Kozelski and I serve as Chair of the Fairhope Historic Commission. And I'm here on behalf of the commission to comment on the building and to make a couple of requests. And we also wanted to read a couple of historic details about the former building into the record. So, the site of the People's Cooperative Store is, former cooperative store, is historically and especially historically significant. And the Fairhope Historic Preservation Commission desires to highlight this building's role in our history. The People's Cooperative Store and Bakery was founded in 1922. It anchored Fairhope's new business district as one of only four cooperative stores in the state of Alabama. And moreover, it embodied Fairhope's single tax philosophy of cooperative individualism, as many of you know, with the motto of, for, and by the people. Between being a rare People's Co-op in Alabama and its location in a very rare historic single tax community, this rendered that a building that existed on this site as absolutely nationally unique. So, after the Great Depression, as you all know, this site, the building continued to operate through multiple generations of Fairhope history canvassing 100 years or more. So, the conclusion and the point of my comments here is that 75% of residents surveyed for the Fairhope Comprehensive Plan responded that preservation of older buildings and community character is very important. Similarly, more than 80% of tourists who we surveyed about what they like about Fairhope identified historic charm as a main attraction. The Historic Commission urges the planning commission and the city council to overall encourage an historically sensitive reconstruction, historically sensitive reconstruction of this treasured iconic former building. Reconstruction with the design echo of the former building will help maintain the downtown historic character of the Central Business District, which will in turn promote a positive tourism balance of downtown Fairhope as a whole. So, the comments in tourism are intended to emphasize that downtown developing and planners, developers and planning commission have opportunity to capitalize in Fairhope's history. But also, of course, historic preservation, no matter how we do it, whether it's reconstruction or design with an echo or with actual preservation of existing buildings, that it also, of course, transmits knowledge of our own heritage from one generation to the other. So, although our commission has not yet had the opportunity to meet since these new plans were updated, I would like to share with the planning commission informally that a few commission members and members of the general public have reached out that the current architectural, I guess you call it elevation or design, appears more in line with Fairhope's general historic aesthetic than what we have seen in the previous iteration. More formally, this is what we did have an opportunity to discuss and what I'd like to request tonight, is the Historic Commission would ask that, as the evolution or discussion moves forward, that the architectural plan continue to reflect historic aesthetic of downtown and/or the original facade. More pointedly, we request the owners to mark the historical site by attaching historic plaque to the building or building site. I believe that one already exists and so that could just be repurposing something that has been taken down. And then finally, we ask the owners to consider incorporating historic display within the building's interior decoration. Now, I understand that's not something that can be required at all. But we would be happy to see the building, as it moves forward, pay homage to the history and be happy to discuss anything with them about that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. All right. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Rodney Pilot and I'm, I'm a Fairhope resident. Need more than that? Nope. But anyway, you know, I'm, I want to speak on behalf of, of the project. And, and like many of you, I think we have the same goal. And I will tell you, you know, I've sat through here for a little past my ADD time. I do applaud you for the detail that you do go through and understand why did I go to very few of these meetings? But, you know, again, I think that what, what you currently have right now is an empty space. You know, it's, if you will, it's an eyesore currently. I would love to see both groups, the people here, the owners. I have no interest in this building whatsoever. I have, I like you, I have the interest in what's best for Fairhope. And I believe a project like theirs would, you know, does it need modifications? I can't answer that. But I do believe there's, there's an opportunity for everybody just to sit together and find, as opposed to take an opposite approach of finding ways not to do things, I would suggest that we find ways to find a way to make this a premier project in the core of, you know, you know, you know, main and main, basically, if you will, in Fairhope. So, we've got an opportunity to do this right. I hear about the historical aspects of it. Acknowledging that, I think, would be a key component and I would suggest that to the owners. But again, I, I think it could be a healthy project. And that's what, what I'd leave you with is not to try to do your work for you, but is just say, let's find a way to make this happen. Because I think there's a path here where everybody wins and that's what I would suggest. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pilot. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Matthews. I'm the owner of Southwood Kitchen in Daphne, Ben's Barbecue in Fairhope and a soon-to-be restaurant at 800 North Section Street. I would like to speak on behalf of this project. I think it's great for Fairhope. You know, we're looking to bring another restaurant to downtown Fairhope. Something nice, something that fits in well, something that brings the history back to it. So, yeah, that's what I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd be 20 pounds lighter if it weren't for Ben's Barbecue, by the way.
Hello, everybody. I think everybody knows me, I have all the buildings surrounding this project, most of them.
That would be John Betha. B-E-T-H-A. Everybody but the one person that needs to write your name down knows you, John. Thank you, sir.
And I'm for the project and I don't, I'm not concerned about the parking situation because I think there'll be plenty of parking and they'll just, and I think people will find a place to park and I think it'll be a good project for town.
Good job.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Dylan Wells. I'm owner and managing partner of Fairhope Historic and Gynecology here in town. And just in hearing some of the comments of people that are in favor of it, of course, that I am as well, I can only bring somewhat of a unique perspective that myself and my partners are sort of committed to bringing the new generation of Fairhope into this world and we, we cherish that. I'm a resident of Fairhope for over 20 years, medical school in Mobile. So, I consider myself a new local. But more importantly, as much as the Historic Commission means, and I think these comments are well-taken and should very well be used, I think we've got a new generation of Fairhopians who are looking for their own new set of history, their own new set of architecture that fit within these guidelines. So, I can only say that as a, sort of a new permanent resident of Fairhope, I would like the, the current people of Fairhope and the new generation coming behind them to have their own source of pride. And that pride is in the downtown district. It brings people from all over county, from Gulf Coast. And I think it drives our economic development and gives us our own sense of pride that we are one of the few southern towns that are growing and not dying on the vine. And I think this project is crucial to keep this downtown growing and not dying on the vine. Thank you.
Goodness. Thank you very much. And Mary would tell you we're Fairhopers, not Fairhopians. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lisa White and we have a business, my husband and I, at 320 Fairhope Avenue. So, we would be almost direct across street neighbors. We've been there for 30 years and, right there and had multiple expansions and been right there in downtown. I think this is a great project. I think the people that are behind it are going to do a good job. I can see both of, I'm really appreciative of all of the details that are going into making this decision because it is an important corner and it's very important for our development. I'm not a good speaker, so I'm going to leave it at that. But anyway, I am for the project.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello, I'm Carrie Palasano, P-A-L-E-S-A-N-O. And we have a business adjacent to this. We're excited about it. We hope that you'll approve it. And we're excited about the historic possibilities of displays. And we just want to say that we're for it. We're not worried about the parking.
Anybody else? All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I think in my 25 years on this board, plus, that's the first time I've heard everything positive on a project and nothing negative. Usually, I see pitchforks in the audience, so that's a nice change. Commissioners, comments, concerns, any questions? We still have the engineer and the architect out there. We have the staff here. I did say earlier that I think it's a loophole finding this and, and, you know, without having the 10 parking spaces. But with that said, I've, I'm one of the very few that I've never totally supported the parking space per apartment theory because I've always felt like if you have offices upstairs, you might have more of an impact than apartments. So, I don't have a huge issue with that item, even though I didn't make that comment. I just wanted to go forward on that. But commissioners, concerns, questions?
I'd, I'd like to say I think Ryan did a good job answering some of the questions I had about non-compliance. I, I think it's a great project. I think that, you know, a lot of the citizens will be able to utilize what they're offering. It's not perfect. We can't make anything perfect, but I, I think it's a great project that we can work with.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I know that as far as the parking goes, that we are undergoing a parking study or we've hired parking professionals who are in the middle of coming up with, studying our situation and coming up with some, you know, ideas and some creative things. I, I think that the worst thing that we could do is make our downtown more suburban. I think the character and why people come here. And so, I'm, you know, I, I think the parking thing is a, is a, is really a separate issue.
Okay. Good point. Anybody else?
Some of the things I brought up, you know, in looking at the criteria, when I brought it up and it talks about, when I was reviewing this, and I want you to know, I spent a tremendous, I spent most of the day Saturday when I wasn't watching college football, going through my notes, taking notes because I, I like the concept of what you're doing. I think it fits well, as counsel said. What opens this discussion is you're trying to put three of those different types of businesses in the same building. That's what opens the discussion about impact and all the things and traffic that we're talking about. If you were building just a restaurant on the site, we wouldn't be having any discussions if you were building just a boarding house. But three stories and the rooftop terrace with three different, and I think in terms of building code, in terms of occupancy classifications, residential to an assembly. That's the way I think of things. And that's what opened up, you know, the, to me, that's what my questions were. I've been, I've been, you know, I was originally hired with the city in 2000. So, I've been around for roughly 25 years. I've never seen this intense of use in any of the buildings that I can recall going back to my time when I started in 2000. Now, we have other areas that have very intense use. The A here is very intense use, a lot of people. The traffic on Bancroft and Oak Street or Bancroft and whatever, Horn Street is, is nowhere near what we're dealing with here. In terms of traffic, I'm, I'm in and out of that area all the time, driving, parking, pedestrians. You know, I may be a little skewed because I remember the day that I was run over in the street when I was standing there doing a flat inspection, it's broken in. He was trying to cross the street in traffic, somebody sped. But those are things we deal with. Looking at what you're supposed to take into account in terms of impact. Noise, that's a wash. We've got a bar right next door. We've got an event, we've got an event space right across the street. That's, to me, that is not a concern. Visible intrusions, I agree with what Ms. Kozelski said. I, I really like the design that you come back with on the second one. I think it fits better just from a visual aesthetic. I like the idea of doing something to try to honor what was there. This is going to be an entirely new building. But the building that was there was, was significant to the history of the city. Property values, this is not going, this is, this is going to do nothing but held property values downtown, so I'm not concerned about that. Impact to the adjacent area, what kept going through my mind is, regardless of the loading and loading zone, the double doors that come out of the ground floor restaurant onto Church Street, we're going to wind up with a truck pulling up there because that's going to be an easy place to go and we're going to wind up compounding the issue that we have everywhere else with trucks that are parking in the middle of the road and people can't get by. That was my concern. Now, you addressed a good bit of that. When I first looked at the plan, there was no access from the loading zone to actually get into the building. That didn't, didn't, what's in our original package. So, with service corridor, that does help that, in my opinion. I just, my whole concern, my only concern with this is the number of people we're going to be putting into a building on what is one of our heaviest pedestrian traffic corners in town. Probably the second most from the clock there. There's a lot of people there and we're going to be hugely increasing what we've got there. My biggest thing is, I think, it is a lot to try to put on that site. Not what you're putting there. My question is, how much is being put there? That's the only question I've got. So, those were my thoughts. Where I've kind of gone with it and looking at it is, that's why I keep using the word intensity, not density. But it is, I mean, I, I've really gone back through my time with the city. I've never, to my knowledge, seen anybody try to put this much into a single building and then to do it at that location, which is probably our second busiest intersection in the entire town. That's, that's a lot to do on that corner. And I say all that to note, I think overall, the concept of what you're doing would be fantastic there. I, I love the idea of a rooftop terrace. I've been, been loving that idea for a while. I think so. I would love to have someone do that. Because I think that from an aesthetic downtown and from a use downtown, I've got absolutely no issue with that. I've got no issue at all with the, with the ground floor restaurant. I think the number of boarding house rooms within it with not having, in my opinion, all of the ancillary storage and spaces that you need to be able to make those actually function. And this being a site plan review, that's why I keep asking the question. If we approve this, then this is what is locked in. There's really no room to not, unless I am incorrect, and I, please correct me if I speak. But there's no room to really make any changes if we vote this in or if we recommend approval or denial as it is currently submitted. That's been my, my biggest issue is this is our one, I guess, bite at the apple, to quote Mr. Farrell. You know, this is our, our bite at the apple and I want to make sure, slow down and think it through and make sure we got something that absolutely works for what not only the developer needs. Because you have a right to build your building. You absolutely have a right. And when construction starts, I'm going to be telling the neighbors that and calling me to complain all the time. They're doing this, they're doing that. They have a right to build their buildings.
They have a right to build their buildings and you have a right to build yours.
What you're proposing to build, in my opinion, to this point, is a lot for the place that you're trying to build. That's my only concern.
I'd be happy to clarify the site plan, but I don't know if there's any other planning issues you want to speak.
I thought Eric made some very, very good points. I love the project. I think that Larry and Ryan did an excellent job on it. It does scare me, to be honest. I was driving in town in front of Hampton Inn a couple of weeks ago at about 1:00 AM in the morning, coming back in town from a vacation and drove by the Hampton Inn and there were eight parking, eight cars parked in front of the Hampton Inn. And so the next morning, when I went to work early at about 7:00 o'clock, I drove by there and they were still there and at 11:00, when I went to the post office, they were still there. You know, I have some concerns, but I think there are concerns that, you know, this might require, as Paul said, you know, there's a traffic study coming to work some things out with 26 units, you know. People are lazy, you know, when you've got Hampton Inn people that aren't parking in the parking garage and park right in front of the Hampton Inn, you know, that's something that Fairhope might have to look at if you've got 26 people parking right there on Fairhope Avenue instead of going around the back to the parking garage, you know, certainly that can imposition some of the people, even some of the people that spoke positively on it today, businesses, but I think those are things that the city, you know, can work out as needed as the city grows and buildings get, you know, infilled as we go, certainly we're going to have more and more of those issues to look at. My biggest thing, coming back to Frank Lloyd Wright's "Beats in the Details," I can support this, but the one thing that I would really like to see would be, and I think, you know, Ryan, this would be mainly for you, but just to really walk through those before this goes to city council, you know, I'd want to see y'all really walk through some of those details that Eric was mentioning. I don't know how to articulate those very well. I'm not quite that intelligent, but Eric probably could or Paul Fontenot might, they're both a lot smarter than I am, which isn't saying a lot, but some of those items such as, you know, those things about the storage of where are you going to put the, you know, if you need another building up top or to move the elevator doors facing another direction so whether you now have an elevator lobby, maybe that becomes your closet, but I think just those details, Eric makes a very, very good point and we don't want, you know, some kind of a temporary little metal building, you know, squashed in, you know, out there somewhere or, you know, you know, and it's y'all's best interest also not have to give up one of the boarding house rooms or something for storage or what have you, but I think if we do make a recommendation, I would certainly want to put in there somehow that some of those mundane, you know, day in, day out auxiliary sort of issues are looked into prior to, you know, city councils, you know, looking at this.
Eric brought up a lot of good points and that the intent being, I won't restate everything exactly because I agree with the points she brought up. And just to add too, that the people we use, the people's cooperatives, called the cooperators, that was their nickname, and so I think there's probably, it's probably-
If you've been working on this for four months-
I'm sure, you know, the frustrations in the process and we just start, we just saw this Friday, like you, so, you know, I think we should do a better job of clarifying either chair or structure, is it table structure? I was confused by that too. But I have also, on the other hand, have concerns about base on rooftops, not blowing on, you know, and landing at the back of our bomb next door.
Or in somebody's head. So us in the details-
It wasn't.
But I have, I have concerns about the support spaces that allow the operations to have it on the inside instead of in Arts Alley, being thought through so they don't get squeezed out the back door in Arts Alley. I mean, I think those are- While that is getting into the details of the floor plan, it's in order to ensure that operations don't get squeezed onto the side. And so that, I'm not sure about what process is to resolve that, but I think that's- Valid, I do. I think it's a good looking building and I like it better than you made it, so I think that's seeing for that, so, but then, I'll second Eric's-
Anybody else have any questions, concerns, or comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. I mean, initially, I certainly, when I met with the applicants, parking was my concern. I think the boarding house loophole in my mind, that clears out, you know, we have to treat it by what they're applying for, so the boarding house has the one parking requirement-
Works.
And so I think, you know, I may have been concerned about the parking, still might be a concern, but it's a non-issue as far as that goes now. I think the traffic seems like that was really more about the loading zone to me and that's already been addressed as has that one parking space. I think, Mr. Pilot, I feel your pain. I'm not a detail person and this is like way in the weeds for me. I'm more of a big picture, give me the general idea. I'm also a neighbor of this property and I want to see something nice built on that corner. I think this is a beautiful design and a good plan. I mean, I worry a little bit about the amount of potential vehicles and people associated with that, but at the same time, that's a non-issue. I mean, I imagine this being used for kind of a wedding, one-stop wedding destination, rent the whole hotel, have your reception up on the rooftop. I mean, that's kind of what I would almost picture out of that. I don't know how you would really enforce the usage being limited to people staying at the, you know, at the boarding house. I don't really see how you could police that for the rooftop terrace, but, you know, all in all, I think it's-
I hope they don't. I might want to go up there one day.
Yeah, I don't know how we can do that. I think that-
Excuse me, sorry, Chris. Excuse me, we might need another attorney up here. Are you free, Brad? Back there, Brad? I think Chris just is having a heart attack up here, sorry.
Well, I think to the point Ryan was trying to make earlier, you know, they're trying to build something by rights, so I think it needs to just be very black and white. What is allowed in a boarding house usage, what is not allowed? And, I mean, if y'all feel like they, you know, I feel like a couple of these have been resolved already, some of the others, you know, it feels like they might be a little more subjective.
I mean, speaking of that conversation before, I'm Ryan and the city asking for this to be done and whatnot, which is, what does the management represent in the client all have the role that we need? The reason we're up here is that you have this argument, otherwise we wouldn't, we could all go wrong and not all here.
Right, right.
So that's, you know, otherwise, if it was that cutting, Brad, we wouldn't have to be here.
All right, any more questions? Questions if not all entertaining motion, we get to that point.
To remind you, there are two separate cases with-
Correct.
One being a recommendation to city council for the site plan review and then one a decision for the multiple occupancy project case.
Correct.
And for both, to remind you of your options, you can approve it or recommend approval to the city council as is. You could approve it, talking about the MOP, or recommend approval subject to certain conditions. You can deny it or recommend denial to the city council as it relates to the site plan review. On that note, I would say if you are going to make a motion for denial or recommendation for denial, you expressly and specifically include every detail or reason supporting the grounds for your denial in the MOP process or recommendation for denial for the site plan review for consideration by city council. The fourth option is to table. You could potentially table it for further study or further discussion with staff, that sort of thing as well.
Do we have time on the tabling if we chose that?
The site plan review you would. The MOP, it would need to be with the consent of the applicant.
Okay.
Just curious, is there any interest at all on the applicant's part to sit down and talk a little bit further with the things now that all of the commissioners have seen it? Everybody has discussed their questions and/or concerns. Is there any interest in sitting down together and talking this over before a formal motion is made one way or another?
Sure, come on up.
Can I, just want to clarify what you're saying.
Sure.
A lot of the stuff I've heard from your comments, I understood the, aside from the intensity, but the internal stuff is reworking some planning items on the inside to make sure everything is addressed and we'd be happy to meet with staff to figure out however we can make all of those kinds of questions disappear, if you will. We'd love to work through all of those items and figure out how to make each of those pieces.
Number one, you know me and I talk too much anyway, but number two, I kind of cheat because I'm part of the internal DRC review, so I've had a longer look at this than anybody else sitting up here at the podium. I've had more time to look at it because I look at it as an internal part of the city staff. So now that all of them have seen it, I, like I said, I'm just going to say, absolutely love the concept. I think it's an appropriate use there. My personal feeling is it's a lot to put there and there's some questions about with as much as what's in that building, how it's going to function and how it's going to flow and it being a site plan, it locks you in. This is a all or nothing and that I would, if you would be interested in sitting and talking any further unless I am misspeaking, please correct me, Mr. Planning Director, if I am.
So just about that, the site plan, there is some subjectivity there in what a site plan we're approving and locking in. There is some substantial compliance with approved site plan that we have some discretion from as we move through building and all of those things, but in general, it's good to kind of lock in and I think the questions outstanding there were impacts on adjacent neighbors and are we handling those things? And I think you bring up good points. I think the plans that were submitted today start to address some of those things and I think we're close that the further discussions, I think, even in the five minutes of the break, there was a few conversations about the traffic study requirements and those revisions and I think that would be beneficial if we could, you know, have a-
The things you gave us today actually addressed three of the questions that I had jotted down during my research, but this meeting was the first time that I've actually seen them.
Understood.
How long until this would go if this got approved or denied tonight? How long before this would make it to city council?
It's kind of three weeks. I mean, they're not, not a, not a big advertiser group, it's not a zoning amendment.
If y'all make a contingent, if you vote to approve with contingent on making modifications to the plan to meet staff's requirements for storage or something, I don't know, trying to think about how, sort of how y'all did a contingent on other things before it goes to city council.
That's what I was getting at, is make, you know, make it a motion if people like the idea, as I do, would be, you know, I like the concept, would be to make a motion to approve subject to those items that I'm not very articulate at defining being worked out prior to the city council, prior to this being brought up to city council.
Based on the staff recommendations from, I mean, they've cleared everything except the terrace furniture, basically, and that's something, well, and that would be part of that.
Traffic study.
Everything else has been addressed at this meeting.
And also some of the items that have been addressed is a drawing that has been, it was emailed to staff this afternoon. All the departments have not looked at it, I'll be honest with you. I didn't even have a chance in preparing for this meeting to pull that up, to review those drawings, so I don't, I know that instead the gas meter was moved over close to the electrical meter, you know, where the transformer was going to be and that there was plenty of access and all of that. Sometimes, like in some of the other site plan reviews, there's a trickle effect where this gets moved, which then changes the review and we've gone back, like you said, four months of comments, reviews, this gets adjusted, which prompts a new comment. Something else gets adjusted, which prompts a new comment. So the drawings handed to you have not just poof magically made those go away. They potentially very well could have satisfied those completely, but from the staff level, I can't say that with 100% confidence. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that yes, you have new drawings in front of you that show something different, but I can honestly say that that's all well and good.
Well, and also, I love the idea of the historic commission and what she, Erica, presented and that wouldn't have been in any kind of staff recommendations or part of the plan, so I would, you know, my recommendation would be to add that with approval and staff recommendations.
That being our purview, Chris?
What is that?
Require a historic placard or something along those lines to be added to the building.
I don't know that we can require that part of this review. Certainly it can be encouraged though.
No, we won't throw eggs at the side of the building if they'll put a plaque.
They're, the owners have had conversations about wanting to honor the history with some sort of display. We can get with the historic commission and talk through whether it's a plaque or a sign or a whatever display of some sort. We'll figure that out with them at some point in time, yes.
I mean, it's my understanding that this is a historic committee and that the city of Fairhope, have they, we haven't adopted any historic districts or anything like that, am I correct?
That is correct, but there is a historic commission that exists on behalf of the city, a historic preservation commission, but the city council has not identified or adopted a ordinance identifying any specific historic districts or historic properties to date. There are also obviously the county and the state and federal designations of historic property, but that has a different implication related to the local city of Fairhope Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, commissioners, need a motion.
Need two motions. Just to be clear.
I need one on the, first of all, I need a motion on, I need a recommendation for SR 2508.
And Ryan said that they would meet.
I mean, they would prefer just to vote with a contingent on resolving issues versus tabling it. We've been going, anyways, it's been a long time of multiple meetings of other things as well, but going back in history with this.
Biggest thing is we're talking about addressing other issues. What, where are we going to memorialize? What are the issues that if it recommends for approval, contingent upon addressing these issues, where are we memorializing what those issues are before it goes to city council?
The city council, what is the site plan, if those items are site plan items?
They are, but I mean, we, yeah, we've discussed specific items that we'd like to talk about, you know, the ancillary uses, all this other stuff, but if we're making a motion to recommend approval based on addressing the concerns that have been mentioned by the members of the planning commission, what exactly are those issues so that when it does come to discussion with staff in between now and it goes to city council, okay, we got a checklist. This is what you need to do, this is what we got, okay, that's done, that's not, that's my question is what is the list of things that we are going to ask them to address or prove this conditional upon?
And that is my concern about making a conditional approval if there's not objective list.
Well, and that's what my suggestion was going to be when I was saying, you know, I was going to ask if you could make that, if you could make that motion listing the items, because those are the areas I'm not very articulate on. And I know, I know I like to put, you know, subject to staff, reviewing whether or not an auxiliary building would need to be on the roof for storage, storage of the, you know, storage and flow in the building, et cetera.
Well, and the other point though is-
And also that the gas meter moving has not created any other issues.
Well, see, and in that issue, we've got to review that with Fairhope Public Utilities because we can look at it from an aesthetic standpoint of where that gas meter is, but we don't need the gas department coming and saying, well, we moved the meter here, but guess what, it doesn't work there because now I'm only two feet- It doesn't work there because now I'm only two feet from an electrical panel or whatever that issue is, which is part of why addressing these, letting the utilities look at them again and make sure that they're good and they don't have any concerns, that's, my biggest thing is I don't want anything to come up later on. If you get a recommendation for approval, you've got a checklist. I hear it from builders every day. You tell me what I need to do and I'll do it. Leaving it wide open where we don't have an actual list of what the items we're discussing are leaves it very open-ended and, and can cause disagreements at a later time. Follow me?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I, I hear that from builders constantly. You tell me what to do, I'll do it. We just need to have it down on paper of this is what we need to be able, that's, that's my opinion. In order to conditionally approve it, we need to know what is it conditional upon and what are the specific items?
And if we can't, if we can't specify those items, then we probably need to hold it over to the next meeting.
That's, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
I can't specify.
And I, they've been through a lot. We've spent a lot of time on it, they've spent a lot of time on it, but this is a big decision and a big deal for the city, and I want to make sure we have crossed Ts and dotted Is.
Can I, I want to clarify what you said earlier, Chris. You said that they can table the site plan review by themselves, but they cannot table MOP? Is that what you said? I'm sorry. Or can they, can they just table both without the owner requesting for table?
They can table the site plan review one time regardless of the position of the owner.
Yes, sir.
The MOP, they would need to act on tonight unless they have the consent of the applicant to table it.
I got to ask them what their consent is.
Well, while he's discussing with them, I just want to talk about the gas meter real quick. Last time we had our meeting with Fairhope Utilities, we specifically asked what clearances they needed around that gas meter, which was three feet. And so therefore, we provided that with this layout. So there shouldn't be an issue, but as you're well aware, when it comes to actually issuing a permit, they're going to check it for the 10th time.
Right.
And so we, we shouldn't have an issue with the gas meter location. We are well over three feet away from any electrical. The transformer is, I think, four to five feet away from it at that point. And then there are no windows right there that would be impacting it. Obviously, there's not a full electrical design, so there's not an outlet designed right now to be right there, but again, when those plans come to-
You, you know what I'm talking, I just, I, I'm not going to make decisions on behalf of water, sewer, or gas.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to, it to come off that we haven't thought through the gas meter location.
Right, right.
And we just duck it somewhere to get y'all to approve something. So just wanted to point that out.
Can I have five minutes to discuss with council for the applicant?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, Vice Chair. We, we, on behalf of the applicants, we would agree to table it, the MOP consideration, we would, but only till the next meeting, I guess, would be in January. I'm not sure the date's certain of that meeting, but we would, we would consent.
What is that?
It's the first Monday, do we, is that the date? Is that the right date? Is that the applicant?
And I'll, I'll tell you what we'll offer. Instead of waiting till DRC, we'll try to coordinate with the engineer and architect this week, maybe, at our, whatever our schedule, and sit down and kind of go through some of the lingering issues, so they have a little bit more time to work on those, because we are in a short month since applications for January were, came in last week. So we'll try to expedite that.
That's great. The less I'm involved, the better.
Thank you. All right.
So if you will make a motion with the consent of the applicant to table both the site plan review and the MOP-
I need two separate motions.
Separately correct.
All right. First item, we have SR, SR 2508. Do I have a motion to postpone that till our January meeting, subject to applicant request?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to table SR 25.8 until the January 2026 meeting.
Do I have a second? Any further? Favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, SD 2516. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to table with the applicant's consent, SD 2516 until the January 2026 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further? Favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. If y'all leave kind of quickly, please, so we can get on. Thank you so much for coming and your participation. See you in January. All right, next item on the agenda is SD 2517, Harvest Green West, Phase Two.
Give them just 30 seconds to clear out for the background.
We're not going to listen to you anyway. We're tired to go in. That was a joke, Mike. Eric's going to listen to you. He's still got to entertain.
Well, in light of it all, I have prepared a very concise report for your review at this time. So this is Harvest Green West, Phase Two, case SD 25.17. It's located on the west side of Highway 181 near the waters. It's zoned a planned unit development. The survey, surveyor record and engineer record is SC Civil. On the map, you can see the zoning on the left and the aerial on the right. This is a, the last phase of Harvest Green East PUD that was approved in 2021. Preliminary plat, SD 2145, was approved late of 2021. On the screen is the preliminary plat and site data table that we can look at for reference. In general, the purpose of this request is to create 72 residential lots. It'll be serviced by Fairhope Utilities for water, sewer, gas, Riviera, the power, AT&amp;T, the communication. The development has been built in accordance with the design and engineered plans of the approved preliminary plat, and all conditions have been met. As I said, for one mention of utilities, a separate lot for the lift station is reflected on the plat to be deeded to the City of Fairhope. The traffic improvements were installed with the initial phases of the development, and for drainage, the operation and maintenance plan already recorded includes this phase. Staff recommends approval of SD 25.17, Harvest Green West, Phase Two, final plat. I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and SC Civil is with us on behalf of the applicant.
Larry didn't get to leave.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right, Larry, do you have anything to add at this time? You must have done a good job. There are no subjectivities on this. All right, in that case, this is a, this is a-
Subdivision case that does have a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, but anybody wish to discuss Harvest Green West, Phase Two, right behind the waters on Highway 181? Boy, that area is hot in our meeting today, that 181 out there. All right. Nobody will speak to that? I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve SD 25.17, Harvest Green West, Phase Two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passionately. Thank you. All right, Michelle?
Okay, finally, we have Dresden Woods subdivision. It's SD 2519, 2519, this is a preliminary plat. So it's a major subdivision of four lots consisting of 4.62 plus or minus acres. It morphed into a major subdivision because of infrastructure improvements. So it's on the northeast corner of Gayfer Road Extension and Bishop Road. The surveyor and engineer of record is Dewberry, and Aaron Collins is here with Dewberry, zoned R1. Those are the maps, the locators. Now, there is some history on this, so bear with me. In 2020, SD 2018 involved the subject property in a three-lot minor subdivision that was originally tabled by the Planning Commission in May 2020 due to concern about the configuration of the lots at that time, proximity to a fire hydrant, and construction of sidewalks. It was ultimately approved at the June 1st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting with partial acceptance of the fire hydrant and sidewalk waivers with the following conditions. A, sidewalks in a fire hydrant must be installed on the proposed lot number two right-of-way at the time of any vertical construction activities and shall be a condition of receiving final occupancy approval. B, sidewalks must be installed on the proposed lot one and lot two right-of-ways at the time of any vertical construction or class three renovation of existing structures on the proposed lots one and two. And installation of sidewalks shall be in condition of receiving final occupancy approval. And then some housekeeping, a signature block for the City of Fairhope building officials should be included on the plat.
Question. Where'd that come from? I've never had my signature on a title block ever.
I don't, don't ever do one of these partial acceptances with the following conditions either, because this was very strange. I mean, it, this was not any of the recommendations when we read it, but everybody made up the recommendations at that meeting, and this is what they are. So it's partial this, little bit this, little bit that. I, yeah, I guess it was.
And there was also, this was when the family subdivision, we had the Fairhope approved family subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
I remember. I think Seth Moore was presenting this one, and the family just wanted to create two lots so their kids could build a house.
It changed hands like three times.
Yeah, and this is the lots that were created for that, so here we are, and it's kind of a carryover.
It's, it's a carryover of a carryover of a carryover. So like Hunter mentioned, it was annexed into the city in December 2023. When all those things were going on in 2020, there were all kinds of stuff going on with the county and then COVID. So most recently until today, in 2024, the subdivision case 2416 involves subject property and preliminary and final approval of Gayfer Place, Phase Two, which was a two-lot minor subdivision, which is approved with the following conditions. A, installation of sidewalk along Gayfer Avenue extension the length of the property, label new Lot 2B instead of Lot 3B, and then change the subdivision name to Gayfer Place Two, a subdivision of Lot Two of Gayfer Place subdivision. So it was approved with those conditions, however, that was never recorded. So this is the current proposed plat with the four lots. You can see there's a Grady Pond there as well, so we'll talk about that. This is Gayfer Road Extension, Bishop. Okay, yes. Okay, so the general request is to create four legal lots of the two, of the two existing lots that were the Gayfer Place subdivision, which is below. The proposed lots in one and two, face Bishop Road, proposed lots three and four, face Gayfer Road Extension, both roads are Baldwin County maintained right-of-ways, so the developer will have to get consent from the Baldwin County Highway Department for any work and all work done in those right-of-ways. The preliminary plat illustrates a compliant minimum lot width for all the proposed lots are actually pretty large, and property labels lot area for all lots in both square feet and acres, so if this is what moves forward, then that needs to be retained on the final plat. More general comments, proposed preliminary plat has a highway construction setback of 75 feet along Gayfer Road Extension, which might be the case, however, the previous subdivisions that I just talked about in those plats, it never had that highway construction setback off of Gayfer Road Extension. So we just need confirmation that that is in fact a setback that exists, because it hasn't shown up until today or until now. There are various access and utility easements that are depicted on the preliminary plat, and a note should be added to the final plat. If this is approved, then no structure shall be constructed in any easement without the permission of said easement holder. Currently, there are no common areas proposed with the subdivision. Common areas shall be added to the proposed plat in order to accommodate drainage and green space, which we'll talk about a little bit later. And then all four proposed plats are within 450, 50 feet of fire hydrant, there are actually two around there now. So utility-wise, the Fairhope Utilities will provide electric, water, sewer, and gas utility services. AT&amp;T is available for telecommunications. The developer is responsible for the installation of the low-pressure sewer along Gayfer Road Extension, and this is what catapulted it from a minor subdivision application to a major subdivision application, which major has preliminary and final. The existing overhead power lines on proposed Lot Four shall be removed before approval of the final plat. The applicant is working with our utilities right now on that, and the gas service installation for the subdivision will also be determined based on final drawings, whatever those may be. So this is the utility plan. You can, this right here is the overhead power lines on that proposed Lot Four. This is Gayfer Road Extension where those, the sewer and stuff's going to have to be taken, installed there. So traffic, per the submitted traffic letter, the proposed Lot Four lot subdivision is estimated to generate 39 trips daily, which is well below the 1,000-trip threshold, so no further traffic study was conducted. Currently, the stormwater runoff drains to the Grady Pond in the center, then it drains north towards Fly Creek. There's a natural drainage ditch that allows stormwater to flow between the Grady Pond and the right-of-way, aka ditch. There are four drainage pipes along the north side of Gayfer Road Extension within the right-of-way. There are stormwater runoff, there, the stormwater runoff is directed to a culvert that drains under Gayfer Road Extension, and there's a drainage narrative in the packet that states that the addition of the four houses and driveways, driveways will create a minimal increase in stormwater runoff for the site. The applicant submitted a wetland delineation report from July of this year, and there are wetlands on the subject property. However, the applicant was unable to receive a formal delineation from the Army Corps of Engineers as of yet, and the Grady Pond on the property is reflected on the preliminary plat along with a 30-foot wetland buffer, which we would require as a city subject to change if it's turned by the Corps to be something else. So here's a tree and landscape plan which was submitted. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, green space, but it's pronounced, it looks tree and landscaping plan, but it's the green space plan. Currently, it doesn't work. And I'll tell you why. The subject site has less than two units per acre, so it requires a minimum of 10% green space area in accordance with the subdivision regulations, which is probably, which is doable. However, the proposed green space plan does not meet the requirements of the subdivision regulation and needs to be revised in accordance with the subdivision regulations overall. One of the points being the type of green space needs to be identified per Table 4.1, the green space categories and types, and needs to be indicated as such on the final plat as a public access and use easement. So the wetlands or Grady Pond is shown if non-jurisdictional, meet the 10% requirements of a preserve on that table. However, if the Corps of Engineers determines the wetlands are jurisdictional, more green space may be required prior to, prior to the final plat application, so. As to connectivity, which has been a hot button issue with this subject property since it began, the subdivisions began, they're currently not seeing sidewalks installed directly adjacent to the subject property. There is an existing sidewalk along the south side of Gayfer Road Extension, so you can kind of see it right there underneath the title. The slide 2731A, which is depicted above, requires sidewalks to be installed at the time of vertical construction or class three renovation of existing structures. It went on to say, or stated that installation of sidewalks is a condition of final occupancy approval. Those are notes from that slide. SD 2416 had conditional approval, the approval was conditioned on the installation of a sidewalk the length of Gayfer Road Extension that would be directly adjacent to the subject property. So applicant has included a 15-foot drainage utility sidewalk easement along both Bishop Road and Gayfer Road Extension. Staff does recommend sidewalks be installed prior to the application for final plat approval. It seems like sidewalks have continued to be kicked down the road, kicked down the road, and here we are. So again, this is a preliminary plat, so there's time to work these things out. We do recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Dresden Woods with the following conditions. The removal of all structures located on Lot Four prior to, prior to final plat application, which the applicant has said they intend on doing. Removal of overhead power lines on Lot Four prior to, prior to final plat application, which they are working with our utilities about- which they are working with our utilities about right now. Confirmation from Baldwin County of the 75-foot highway construction setback along Gayfer Road Extension. Consent from Baldwin County to do any work in the proposed right-of-ways. Revised green space plan shall be submitted showing accurate labeling and calculations for green space types, and area being counted for green space to demonstrate compliance with that Table 4-1 of the subregs. Sidewalks be installed prior to application for final plat approval, and the addition of common areas to accommodate drainage and green space. And like I said, Dewberry's here, we're here.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? If not, all right. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Aaron Collins, Dewberry. I did have some questions really for, for staff. The addition of common areas, I'm not real sure, like, we're not, we don't have like a detention area or anything like that. To have cause for a detention pond, these are obviously really large lots where they're not going to be going in and leveling everything down. We don't know who the builders are. I feel 99% confident it's going to be, you buy a lot, you get a builder, they build your lot. So, you know, having to coordinate all that with an HOA is not really something that our client wants to do. And then second, we respectfully would like to request the, the same condition of approval on sidewalks to be done at certificate of occupancy. Not trying to avoid it, we've put the easement there. It says, you know, it's got the same verbiage on the plat, shall be installed. There's no question that they must be installed. But those are our two.
Do we have, or I don't know if this is a Hunter or Chris question. You know, by the way, I'm nicknamed Mr. Sidewalk, and, and you lost me at the sidewalks. I mean, my concern with what, with, with your idea there is that, you know, if you drive through Quell Creek, for instance, you'll see where sidewalk chunks are missing. You know, I've wanted the city and talked to a few city council people, but they aren't as mean as me. I've wanted to say that if you own a lot, you know, if you've owned a lot for more than two years and there's a sidewalk on the lots neighboring you, you have to go ahead and build one on your property if you've got one that you're speculating on. But my concern about the sidewalks would be, you know, what if somebody buys both lots on, say, Bishop Road, builds a house on the one furthest from Gayfer, and just holds that other one for 25, 30 years? Then you've got, you know, sidewalks basically that, that don't go, and that's my concern on that. I don't have an issue on this thing, four units, as big as the lots are, not having green space, because it seems kind of rough to have a owners' association for four people. But is that something that we, that we can even...
We would have to come back in. We would have to re-advertise a waiver for that. So that would have to come back to us with advertised waiver. We wouldn't necessarily support it or deny it, we'll review that. But that would be the, the merit under which that can be granted. It would be a green space waiver and follow those criteria of the waiver. You know, and one of the issues right now is the buffer of the, can be counted, the wetland itself, we don't know, because the core determination hadn't come in. Our regulations say you cannot count core regulated wetlands as green space. There's nothing preventing non-jurisdictional.
And if we had that as green space, we'd pretty much need the sidewalk so people have access to the green space.
And it's more, it would, Michelle's kind of guiding, you know, there was no green space type put on a plan or in a proposal. That would be the only thing we could see qualifying as a preserve. I would caution, and that's why we said the, the green space plan does not work. I would rather consider the waiver as opposed to saying people's front yards are now green space. That sets a precedent that, you know...
Right.
Or even relook at, you know, in long-term, when it is smaller numbers of lots or bigger lots, maybe the green space is reduced.
It's not so much the size of lots, the 2 on Bishop aren't that big.
Yeah.
It's more just having just a couple of lots there.
Right. So that was kind of the, the common area was tied to the, the green space and what the, the pond is. There is also, and Eric can tell you this, there is also a benefit of wetlands being in common area. So they are looked after by all neighbors, not heavy-handed HOA, but by all neighbors instead of one person mowing them down and being a violation issue. So that is a, a benefit of that being in common, whether it's green space or just protection of the environmental drainage area within there, because there is some significant issues. And regionally.
I think the waiver would need to be on the preliminary plat if we go the waiver route. My questions, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right. I guess I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Then I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. All right, commissioners?
Minor subdivision, this is a major, you know, like, then it's clear what's required for each. And so I sort of hate to start chipping away at the major.
Well, roughly R1, you know, lots, and that, that was, we used to not have required. And that's, I think, some legitimate critique from our design community, you know, that, you know, well, that's...
Set in the standard.
Well, I think R1 lots, we probably, the way houses have been started to be built now, I think we still need green space at R1, because it's, you know, my pet peeve of that detached garage, that sort of breezeway attached garage that goes all the way from property line to property line, even on R1 now, you know, there's, most houses, there's nowhere for kids to throw the baseball. But just, but just saying that, you know, if you have a three-acre lot or what have you, kind of like those that we had out on 104 that time. You know, I think we waived that, we waived that, you know, because all the lots were three acres in there.
Yeah.
But no, this is not that case. All right. Well, you want to make a motion, madam?
I was trying to get to the staff recommendations.
Put the staff recommendation back on the screen, please.
I can put it up.
Thank you. Sometimes they're not matching.
Yeah. This one matched.
Well, and I don't know if Aaron knows, do you, would, would you like to table to get, ask for that waiver? Or do you think you can accommodate that through these conditions?
I really need to speak to the client as far as doing a waiver. I know that he is adamant to not want to put anything in common space, let Lot 3 and 4 handle their portion, stay out of the wetland, stay out of the buffer. You know, that's the plan.
Well, I mean, if, is it fair to say if I'm about to make a, I was about to make a motion with staff recommendations if they want to table that, because that's not, they might want to...
I think, and I'm going to make a recommendation that, you know, and you kind of think it through, I think that would be the way to proceed. If they have another conversation and want to come back and get a waiver, they can come back and amend the preliminary approval.
Cool.
Is that fair?
No, that's clear as mud. Sorry. So we're not going to table it, but we're going to...
We're not going to table it.
It would be, it would be a approvals, and I'm not telling you what to do, but what I understood Hunter to say was a conditional approval set forth in the staff recommendations. And if they decide, they decide that they want to seek a waiver, they would have to, we would have to come back before the planning commission, we could advertise it, and you could have an amendment to the preliminary plat.
Okay. But that's not thwarted by us doing this.
Correct. It would just require them advertise the waiver or provide notice of the waiver and have them come back.
Well, so...
Yeah, we had that, remember, we had that happen down there on a little piece of property down by Gambino's where a sidewalk was going to have to go through like a concrete hill in the, in the Gambino's fish pond. So, you know, every now and then it can happen.
If you table it, they'd have to do, they'd have to come back and go through the steps anyway, so.
A little redundant, I think.
Okay.
This, if they can make it work with these conditions, there's no, no need to delay.
So I move that we recommend approval of SD 2519 Dresden Woods preliminary plat with staff recommended conditions 1 through 7.
Just to clarify, this is a subdivision, so this would not be a recommendation. This would be approval by the planning commission. This is not a recommendation to city council.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was reading.
No problem.
They're recommending to us.
We recommend to you.
Yeah. So I, I move that we approve SD 2519 Dresden Woods preliminary plat with all of staff's recommended conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second? Any further? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda, Resolution 2025-05. This is a, would be a, is a resolution to extend the current mortuary room for how long? Four months?
120 days?
Yeah, and just to clarify, the city council enacted an ordinance to this effect, so this would basically be the planning commission recognizing the ordinance that city council enacted, extending the mort, the suspension on applications for certain types of projects for 120 days.
Subject to the same... Jimmy, do you want to make a motion?
Subject to the same terms of city ordinance.
Jimmy, Jimmy made a motion to accept Resolution Number 2025-05. Do I have a second?
Second. It's a public hearing.
What's that?
Resolutions are, resolutions are public hearings, correct? Yes. Resolutions are public hearings.
We open it for public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. I would like to open the public hearing. You all right back there? Yes, sir. Public's fine with it. I'm closing the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.